I can have your attention when you start the meeting. We're missing two. Well, sorry, Phyllis is in charge, of course. We know that.
You're still waiting on...
Well, I was gonna wait because by the Pledge of Allegiance, a couple other things. We have some housekeeping to do before they get here.
Okay.
Which won't affect the meeting. Is that okay with you? We all know that, everybody knows the administrative assistant really runs the place, right? So, Phyllis, whatever you want me to do. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're in good shape. Okay. I believe we have a video on the Pledge of Allegiance?
Nope, we have a number of students.
Oh, we have a number of students. I said video.
From the Sanborn Regional Middle School, and then we have a video.
Oh.
So, we have Finn and Tressa Blomberg, Ellie Ash, and Lila Wokel. Come on up, right to the front here, and lead us in the pledge, that would be great. Thank you very much. Ready?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And we are called the Pledge of Allegiance, engaged under God, individual, and we are to testify.
Good job, guys.
Can you give them one?
No.
Okay. 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 Is Cheryl Gannon here? Lauren, could you come forward, please?
Me?
Yep. Unless there's another Lauren in here. Hopefully, most of you know Lauren. She is the, does the election already take place and he has been appointed, or are you still technically it?
He's in.
He's in now, okay. So, she was the school, the student representative to the school board, and we have, Phyllis, did you take some, ah, what's that? A little, little thank you very much, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren.
We appreciate all your time. All right? Thank you very, very much.
It's nice to work with you this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Good job. We have her replacement. You wanna say things, a few things about yourself, and introduce yourself, and...
Yep. Hi, my name's Adam O'Rourke. I was elected to this student school board member position yesterday. A couple things about me, I'm the president of the drama club. I'm involved in many clubs such as Mr. Beast's Park Club, Indian Government, I play baseball. That just wrapped up. Yeah, I'm very excited to get to work.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I am going to Simmons College in Boston to study political science.
Board member, if it's all right with you, I would like to move up the Costa Rica trip eight-one, because the students, I got an email, and they need to be somewhere else as soon as possible. So, if it's all right with you, we'll discuss that. Okay, all right. I believe that all the people are here that want to discuss it, they'll come forward and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Dennis Love.
Hi, I'm Oliver Redlin. Okay, so, we're just gonna kind of be going over this like our temporary for our trip. Just let us know information on it. If you already have a trip, you can use your one trip. We've used it for a lot of the other trips we have. We have, as of right now, we have two chaprones who are going. Two of us are from Costa Rica, especially the country. So, two students will be attending, and they're both honestly very busy at the finish. And the students that will be going are also semi-chooled and finished, obviously, the learning has been finished. It's all finished. Most of us are going to be...
So, we are taking this seven-day trip, so Students Love Travel offers a lot of trips, so we're taking the seven-day Students Love Travel Costa Rica trip. Yeah.
Okay, so, the, yeah, so, we will depart out of Boston on April, in April of 2019, our April vacation. And our lead chapron is Senior Mercedes, she's right here. And the program size is eight or more students. We already have all of the students signed up, and the signups have closed, so we have...
We have twenty students who are going, and then seven are on a wait list, because we can only have twenty going, so...
Yes. And the program director, we'll have a program director. There will be great flights, prime accommodations, authentic dining, flexible itinerary, and, okay, so, there's a lot of insurance that all of the students and parents have signed up for through the trip.
Yeah. Yeah, so, everyone has insurance, so Students Love Travel is basically covering every student, so it's not going to be, like, obviously, they said that they've never had to use the insurance in the past. Also, if a student does something against the rules, obviously, they are going to be sent back to the United States on the cost of the parent, not on us. So, basically, what happens is, we're going to obviously be in a coun, like, another country besides the United States, so that is like something that can raise a lot of questions, like, is, are we all going to be safe, and are we all going to behave? So, they will be sent back if anything goes wrong.
We will also be staying in a few different hotels and resorts throughout the trip, and they're all very well rated, they're very well, some of, one of them's like a five-star resort or something like that, so they're all very safe places that we'll be staying.
And our tour director is someone who has been to Costa Rica in the past, so he or she will know everywhere that we're going, so it's not a trip that is going to cause
We have a few itineraries. If you guys would like to look at them, I can pass them around. I'm gonna take one and pass it. Do you have any questions as of right now? Do you okay?
Hi.
And when does this take place?
Over April vacation, so it's the whole week of April vacation.
Are you completed with your presentation?
I believe so, if there's no...
I'll take a motion to, I guess it's allow, or, yeah, to approve the field trip.
So moved.
Okay. You got a motion and a second on that, all right? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Those of you who have just heard an aye, I know some of you can see him on the back of what we're looking at, but we can see him here, and it's, Corey just got up and walked away.
I'm outta here.
But he's here, he's offsite, that's one of our school board members. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, action on the minutes, from five to eighteen. Second, second chair speaker. Oh, sorry, all right, okay, well, why don't we get the minutes in, if we got motion on the floor. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Like a motion on the non-public.
So moved.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor? That is unanimous, all right. And I was remiss, because we have a video after the Pledge of Allegiance, but it was written in, didn't see it, sorry.
If we can hand students through love signs, we're self-learners, responsible for the
I could just take a brief moment and just say that, to recognize that we have three of our extraordinary league of scientists here tonight, Elle, Lila, and Tressa, and again, just a round of applause, they did a great job all year.
I saw you walking in, Cheryl. Cheryl Gannon, come on up here, Cheryl. I saw you. Come on down, you're the next contestant on The Price is Right. Cheryl has been a videographer for a while now, right? And we're now going to be doing it a little bit differently, but we wanted to recognize her for the many, 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 many hours that she put in helping us at no cost for the school district, for what we all like. So, as a little thank you, we'd like to express our thanks and appreciation. Thank you very, very, very much.
You might want to open that now.
Maybe not the card, but that, you might want to open now.
Is it an Emmy Award?
No, but...
Phyllis and I had some fun.
I think, I think...
They wanted you to have an Emmy.
Videographers do get Emmys.
So, they wanted you to have your own Emmy. Thank you, Cheryl. Yes, there is a card in there, too. You're welcome, thank you for everything you've done.
I believe the manifest has worked its way around. Cheryl, do you have it back, or?
Him, he's...
Okay. Do we have some resignations?
Yes, we do have some resignations.
Okay, I believe their, next on, on the agenda is resignations.
We have the following resignations. The high school, Diane Anderson is retiring. Jennifer Fiden has resigned. David Lennox is retiring. Dorret Migliore and John Welch. In the middle school, Marilyn Cook is retiring. Cynthia Morissette is retiring, and Heather War has resigned. Colleen Blanchard from Memorial School has resigned. Joyce Corbin is retiring, and Samantha Kaminsky and Brianna Spatulie.
Take a motion on the resignations. I think we can do them all at once.
So moved.
Okay, so that's a motion as read.
As read.
Any discussions? All in favor? End up that's unanimous. I believe you have some nominations.
I do have some nominations. At the high school, I'd like to nominate Megan Arena as school counselor, Julie Ely as special education case manager, Devin Helkey as biology teacher, and Heather Heeler as a chemistry teacher. At Memorial School, I'd like to nominate Jolene Horn as special education case manager, Casey Lowes as special education case manager, Tara McLaughlin as teacher of grade five, Evelyn Satois as teacher grade two, Kristen Smith for speech and language, and Melissa Khalil as preschool special education teacher. Oh, I'm sorry, that last one's at baking school.
Motion?
So moved as read.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Discussions? All in favor? That is unanimous. Superintendent's report.
All right. So, I have a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board tonight before I present the findings of my entry plan. The first thing is that I wanted to talk about graduation events. It's a pretty fun time of year, so I'll just read through this list. June eighth, we have the yearbook dedication at eight forty-five a.m. in the auditorium. June eleventh, we have the spring sports awards at five thirty p.m. in the cafeteria slash auditorium. June thirteenth, senior sports awards at six p.m. at The Burrows in Haverhill. June fourteenth is baccalaureate, seven p.m. ceremony at the Kingston Congregational Church. June fifteenth is the gradu, graduation elementary school walk. I really love this idea, that the seniors all go walk around the elementary schools. That's at nine thirty a.m. at each of the three elementary schools. June fifteenth class day is at eleven a.m. on the library lawn or the gym, and June fifteenth is graduation, either six p.m. on the library lawn or the gym, to be determined by Mr. Stack. So, the board asked me to kind of report on resignation totals and general staffing update. I just want to let everyone know that this year, we've had seven resignations, nine retirees, two leaves of absence, and so far, we have eight new employees, because there's been internal shifting and moving, and some of the positions were reduced through the budget process. So, there'll be a couple more folks coming on board over the next couple of weeks. All right, so the other item that we covered this last week or two was the process for bringing concerns to the school board. At our last meeting, it was asked that I outline a plan or a process for bringing concerns to the school board, and I did send those out in my constant contact notification, which goes to over three thousand people, and the process was also outlined in the local newspaper, but I'd like to read it tonight, just for the sake of the camera and the record for the board. So, the first step is to address the, the issue at the lowest level possible, which means talking directly to the person that there's a concern with. And that's always the first step. And then the second step is to go to the principal. If the issue cannot be resolved with a staff member, the next step is to talk to the principal. Then the department director. This applies to special education and curriculum instruction issues. Before meeting with the superintendent, the director of student services and/or the director of academics, professional learning, and student affairs would be consulted. The issue would then come to me if it could not be resolved, superintendent, and then if it can't be resolved with me at my office, some issues would go to the school board chair, depending on our policies and laws. And finally, if it could not be resolved with the superintendent and school board chair, it would go to the school board. So, I just think it's important for everyone to understand the process, and also know that if anyone has concerns, I can assure you that our administrative and my office would be happy to talk with you to help you with this process.
I would like to pick up on that, but seven. This is not an escape or try to get out from us doing our job. We could end up adjudicating an issue. So, if a parent calls me, or calls a school board member, we would probably refer you to the appropriate position, and like in the military or some governments, you solve problems at the lowest possible level, so you would start with, let's say, a principal or assistant principal, and then move up. It's not for us to try to get out from under, but it is the process that we have to have. Give you another good example, that I had a difficult time when I first came on the board. I cannot go to him. I am an individual. I can't go to him and say, Tom, would you give me, right? As a private citizen, I might be able to do it, but as a school board member, I cannot. If I want something from the superintendent, because he's our only employee, he works for the school board. Notice I said "board," not an individual. Individual board members do not go to him and say, could you give me? They might be able to do that under the right to know, or as a citizen, but as an individual member, I have no power. So, they bring it to the board, and then the board brings it to the superintendent, or directs them to do something. And I know that sounds a little screwy, and that's why I want to bring that up, too, because we're under the same rules, all right? I cannot just go to the superintendent and say, hey, I want, give me, all right? Because I am not the school board. He works for the school board. Another very important thing that people should understand, he is the only board, he's the only employee that the board has. You can imagine if we were Ford. You can't have the board of directors going on the floor and saying to somebody, now I want you to tighten this bolt down or that bolt down. And if you've read the newspapers, you know that in fellow communities, that's been a real problem with some school board members. The school board members wanted to actually go into the schools, right? We cannot do that, all right? He works for us, everybody else kind of works for him. So, I think it's important people understand this hierarchy of command that we sometimes don't like, but it's the things we're under also. So, I just wanted to reiterate that this is a process that is, I think, in law, and it's a process certainly every school board that I know of in the entire state goes under. And again, this is not trying to, hey, don't give me a call at home. We have no problem. People calling me at home, they call me all the time, right? My wife says she's not the secretary of the school board, you know? But that's okay, I have no problem with that, nobody does. But just so you'll understand, that sometimes we cannot help you, we have to go to him, and then he does what the rules allow him to do, all right? So, I think it's very important we kind of bring that in, too. Okay, sorry to interrupt like that, but...
Oh, no, no problem. My last comment is just, I want everyone to know that we're happy to help you. So, if there's a concern that you bring to a principal and it doesn't get resolved, I would like you to feel completely comfortable coming to my office. And even if we can't answer at that point, we'll get you to where you need to be so that you feel supported. Our goal is to build trust and, and work with the community collaboratively, so wherever you ask for help, we're gonna get you to where you need to go. That's our goal. So, thank you very much. The next item on my superintendent's report is the, my report of my entry plan. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to go to the podium for this. Oh, I'm sorry, the safety advisory team update. We met last Monday, and the team is made up of first responders within the district and all of the district principals. Mr. Chisavsky shows up as the union president. We have a very strong team that's worked really hard to try to solve some problems around safety, and just do everything that we can to keep our schools as safe as possible. The team has agreed upon a plan that we will begin training staff for, in the first couple of days before school starts, and then shortly after, we'll be practicing drills with students, and then after that, we will actually be practicing drills with the entire fire, police, all the folks, the state police, everyone that's involved, so that we have some, some practice runs to see if there are any glitches in the system. The goal for us is to keep everyone safe without interrupting our ability to be effective as a school. It's very, very tricky. But I did want to say that I'm very grateful for the incredible support of our community. Everyone who's been involved in this work has just gone above and beyond, and folks are looking for grant money to help us, folks are working hard to get training for free, and I just couldn't be more happy and feel more supported by the community in dealing with some very challenging issues. So, I just want to thank the folks who have been helping with this.
While he's walking to the podium, I want to make a kind of personal announcement. Tammy Mahoney was nice enough, she's gonna step forward and present the diplomas on graduation. I will not be there, because I have a grandson who is graduating over Wyndham, so it came a choice between my grandson and, she's not here, but anyway, of being here. Hope you don't mind, I chose my family to be there for her, for him, rather. So, thank you, by the way, Tammy.
I am honored.
By the way, I'm gonna provide you with the new convention, we all have our own, right? All right, so, this, the slide deck here is just a small piece of the summary of the work that I've done. There is a longer document that will be posted on the website tomorrow morning. So, I have conducted an entry plan as part of beginning my work at Sanborn Regional School District. I've met with many, many people, and there were three essential questions that I asked. What is working for the Sanborn Regional School District? What needs to be improved? And what ideas and recommendations do constituents have for improving the issues? Because, of course, the folks who are working on the, on the issues usually know the best ways to solve them. I spent well over a hundred hours interviewing people, either individually or in very small groups. So, I met with all of the school board and budget committee members for individual interviews, and I also met with former school board members and budget committee members as well. I met with the school administration, I met with district staff, teachers, and paraprofessionals in professional learning communities, which is small groups of four or five people, students, parents attending these school board meetings, the budget committee meetings, school walkthroughs and staff meetings. By the way, this was probably the most fun I've ever had as an administrator, it was so awesome. I just got to spend time with people, talking about their work and what their passion is. I loved it. Might have to do it again. So, the areas that were addressed, I tried to group them, because there were so many things that came up. So, I grouped them in six core areas: facilities, instruction, student discipline, budget, safety, and technology. It's really important to note, this document is not, it's intended to be a summary of all of these meetings. It is not a transcript, so I didn't write everybody's words down, word for word, and share that in any way. What I tried to do is to figure out the themes that came up during the meetings. Some thoughts were not included, because as it says there, they were too, just too specific, or the concern is not shared by the majority of people. That does not mean that that concern is not important, or it won't be addressed. It just means that it didn't fall into the, the report. It just means that it didn't fall into the report because it didn't come up consistently enough or it was too specific. So I'm going to start off with facilities. We have some amazing facilities. Obviously, this building is the newest building. It does have a few concerns, but in general, it's in great shape. Obviously, the middle school is struggling a little bit more because it's an older building, it still has its original windows. We had roof problems with the middle school a few years ago. And the Bakersfield Memorial Schools have had some pretty significant updates, but these are the things that came out of the conversations about concerns that people would like addressed sooner than later. I just want to remind everyone, these aren't my opinion. These are literally what people told me. So I'm reflecting back what people told me, and then I do offer some steps for guidance at the end of this process. So at the facilities, the first thing that came up was folks want equity with regard to climate control in each building. Some buildings have full climate controls, cooling and heating, and others only have heating. And that can be very uncomfortable during the months of May, June, September, and early October. Number two, for safety reasons, the main office at the Memorial School needs to be moved to the previously proposed location. It's very important to note that it's not a significant cost, but it would provide significant upgrades in safety. So basically, the entry to the Memorial School would be moved to the front of the building on the left, for those of you who know the building. We want to consider the future use of the middle school and the feasibility of updating that school. The school is very old and would need significant funds, and that will come up more in a moment when I talk about the study that the board has engaged in with NESDEC. We need to create a realistic and manageable district capital improvement plan. One of the challenges that the administration faced this year was that the previously considered capital improvement plan had $4.5 million in improvements in one year. We just, the taxpayers cannot absorb that, it's too much. So we need to come up with reasonable steps that we can carry out year to year. And then last, we do need to budget emergency lines for unanticipated facilities costs. For example, one thing that's come up recently is that the gym, the Swayze Gym roof is going faster than we thought it would, and that's an unanticipated cost that we're going to have to talk about later. So NESDEC, as I said before, the board did hire NESDEC this year, the New England School Development Council, and they are, it's a long-term planning study of facilities, use, and enrollments. So this process is going to help the district to decide the direction for the future. They are not going to tell us what to do. They're going to give us ideas that we could do in the future. So it's different than them doing a study and telling us the direction that we should go. It's more, these are a palette of options that you can choose from or think about as a district, and then also what would the outcomes be if you chose those options. They have been working very hard, and they have done a great job of speaking with many, many stakeholders, including realtors, city planning boards, and every, they've been to every school, to every room. Thank you, principals, because you did a great job. We got a lot of compliments about how professional our staff had been and what a great job they did presenting the information that the NESDEC folks needed. Now, when the, when the plan goes up, there'll be a hyperlink you can click to get more information about the NESDEC study if you're curious. So instruction. In the area of instruction, this is the biggest area. There are a lot of things that are going very well. This district has done an incredible job of supporting students in a variety of ways. I think it's really important to note that one of the hugest issues that we face as a district is a lack of intervention from staff for math and reading prior to special education referral. So basically, kids go from being in the regular ed class, and if they're not doing well, their primary option for help is to be identified for special education. And the best practice is to have intervention prior to that occurring. So as you can see in this chart here, we have 644 students at the high school, and there is no reading intervention teacher for pre-special education, no math intervention teachers, these are also pre-special education, no paraprofessionals for either math or reading. At the middle school, there are 335 students. They have a reading intervention teacher, but she only deals with special ed. So that person is not available to the regular ed students. They have one math intervention position, which they have used to reduce class sizes in grade six and seven, and Mr. Rutherford will be presenting the results of that in the fall, but it's been pretty positive for them. They also have a paraprofessional for reading and none for math. At Bakersfield, there are 354 students, and they have one paraprofessional for reading and one for math. Now remember, these are prior to special education. There are special education paraprofessionals, but they are for identified students with IEPs. What we have to talk about as a district is how do we support these kids before they go to special ed in the hopes of reducing the special education referrals? Memorial has 268 students, they have one intervention teacher who is working with reading, and they have two paraprofessionals, one for reading and one for math. So this is an area of growth that has been brought up consistently throughout all of my interviews. Assessment. There's been a lot of conversation with the staff about assessment and some parents. Parents, parents and staff really want to talk about the assignments and projects having clearly fixed due dates. Some students are bending the rules a little bit, which is a part of the growth process whenever you start to work in a proficiency-based model, but we're ready to move to the next step. Rubrics need to be understandable by staff, students, and parents. Staff need to have more of a voice regarding when students reassess, and also, students need to be responsible for the timely completion of assignments. And I'm very happy to say that the high school is already engaging and working on these issues. Assessments and grades need to be timely and entered at the grading system consistently. So some teachers are putting stuff in there right away, some are waiting a little while, and some are waiting a really long time, and that's really not good for building trust with the community. Student engagement and cell phones. I have a 13-year-old. I have to say it's not easy with cell phones and social media. So I'm living it and talking about it. And I have to say that, you know, the information area has made the task exponentially harder for students to be engaged in school. There is a policy in our district, JICJ, and the policy reads that student use of electronic communication devices is strictly prohibited during instructional time. Such devices are to be turned off and put away out of sight. The policy also goes on to say that the student can use the device if the teacher allows them to for a specific academic purpose. Well, I think we've got some work to do, and I applaud Mr. Stack because he took the initiative when I showed him this slide and talked to him about it to already schedule a staff meeting to talk about what to do about this, because what it's turned into is that this teacher's following the rule perfectly and this one isn't, and then the kids don't like the teacher who is, and they're okay with the teacher who isn't following the policy. The reality is that it's very clear, shut them off. So I just want everyone to know that this is going to be enforced in the fall, and I know that this will be a challenge, but we will be providing some information and communication regarding this as we get to the fall. Professional learning communities. Many people have told me, particularly the teaching staff, that they feel that the professional learning communities is one of the best things that's happening in our district. Teachers are talking about teaching and learning, they're looking at data, talking about assessments and how to help kids learn. One challenge with professional learning communities is that we did a lot of work on this a couple of years ago, and then we've had staff turnover. So one thing that staff have asked is that we reboot this initiative and give more professional development to our new teachers to kind of, quote, catch them up to speed. And it doesn't mean that they're just new teachers like fresh out of college, anyone who's new to the district, because our district has such a strong culture around this work that it's kind of a lot to take on without some training as a, as a new member of our Common units. So staff have been very clear that the curriculum is clearly aligned with the state of New Hampshire and national standards. They feel very strongly that this has been done very, very well. It's clear which standards students must master, and aligning the curriculum so that the students are taught the skills that are necessary to meet the standards is not a small task. I have to say that it's probably one of the most impressive things next to professional learning communities that I've seen personally. That's my opinion as a, as a superintendent, is that I could not be happier because having this lined up sets us up to do other work that's really important around differentiation for students' needs, for those who are struggling and those who are really high, every student. We want to meet every student's need. So the aligned curriculum's been great. The next step in this area is we have to create common units, because common units build on themselves within the year and vertically. So you may have a unit on fiction or nonfiction in first grade, and another unit on fiction or nonfiction in second grade, and the standards should be age-appropriate as they move from grade to grade, but the topic stays the same. So what we're trying to do is cyclically build their skills over years. We have a lot of talking to do about this, and this is a big area of growth. I usually recommend that districts adopt two to four common units per grade level because teachers need time on the other days to differentiate for their class. So we want to have some things be tight and some things be loose because every group of kids is different and has their own style. Parent communication. Many people have expressed concern about communication. We need to clearly define minimum expectations for parent communication regarding academics. Now, this would be teachers to parents or administration to parents. It's really important for folks to know that verbal communication, staff have told me that sometimes it's really hard to get parents on the phone. So it's, it's not necessarily that they aren't trying, it's that they can't get someone. What I've told people is that I don't ever want to get something in writing or in an email or in a letter that I haven't talked to someone about on the phone beforehand because you can't hear the tone or the caring that we provide for the kids if it's in a letter. Ninety percent of communication is nonverbal. So it's really important to try to talk to parents whenever we can. I do recognize that communicating with parents can be really difficult, but we're going to be talking about some procedures and protocols for this more in the fall, and the administrative team has already been discussing it at length. Rating. A lot of parents have kind of reported that they don't understand the grading system. And I, I can understand that because you could train one group of parents, or they don't show up for the conversation about grading. We need to do a better job of helping parents to understand the grading system, and the present system currently is creating confusion and fosters some mistrust toward the district. So on some level, we have to address this, and it's suggested that the district develop a team of parents, teachers, and administrators to work on this issue. I feel like a committee would be the best way to address helping parents to understand the grading system. Rigor. Many folks have felt that the overall academic rigor is not high enough in our district. Staff and parents at the high school express concern that they currently, students must achieve a 1.5 on a four-point scale to be considered basic proficient. I apologize, I gotta put the word "basic" in front of "proficient." Some staff would like this recalibrated to a minimum of three. They've had conversations, three might be a little bit too high, so I just want to let everybody know that the high school is already engaged in working on this, this issue, and the administrative team has been meeting as well to discuss what, what, what to do. Again, I recommend a committee. If it's, you know, teachers, parents, students, administrators, a group of folks to talk about what's going on with regard to our grading. I have, I don't like to tell people how to, how to facilitate change, and so what I have done is the administrators have been kind of talking about this issue, which I have to say, when I brought this up a month and a half ago, they took the lead and ran right with it. So they're, they're already working on this, I couldn't be happier about that. Attendance and parental involvement. Attendance is a very complicated issue. Staff have reported that attendance is a major issue which needs to be addressed. Tardiness also needs to be considered in addition to absences. Parent involvement has been reported as a significant challenge by many. Just getting parents on the phone to tell them, you know, these tardies are causing your child to miss X, Y, and Z, has been really hard for some staff members. So this kind of ties back into the parent communication piece, but I do think it's really important to note that this is a difficult issue because we don't have, I mean, there's not a lot of, quote, teeth to the law around attendance. What we need to do is build relationships with kids and get them to school because they want to be there. Professional development. Sandborne's done an amazing job with providing meaningful and effective professional development with a very, very small budget. In fact, I attended a training today, which was one of the best trainings I've ever been to. We had 20 staff members there because Mr. Terrell has worked so hard to write grants and get people to things. I couldn't believe it, it was fantastic. Teachers would like more choices regarding professional development, and I, the district would benefit from engaging in surveys of staff for professional development needs and plan differentiated opportunities based on the district goals and teacher feedback. That's a really loaded slide. That was my job before I came here, and I have some ideas that I'll talk about more in the future. But basically, the idea is that when you go to a PD day, you'd spend some time in choice sessions, you'd spend time working with the grade-level team, and then you'd spend some time with a presenter. So the idea is to, we talk about differentiation for kids, but we don't talk about differentiation for adults. So that, that would be something we'll be working on. School pride. So staff have reported that school pride has improved over the past years. They shared some stories about the past and talked about how they rarely hear students speak negatively about Sandborne. Frankly, students, staff who have been here for a long time reported to me directly that kids used to walk around saying, "Sandborne sucks." And that was really hard to hear, but the staff was really honest with me, and they said that they don't hear that as much anymore, but what they do hear is that they feel like the community doesn't really understand the high level of work that's going on in the district to support struggling students, and they want to, you know, to, to kind of build a bridge between the recognition that Sandborne receives as a result of awards. And it, these awards have contributed to the sense of pride throughout the district, but we need to kind of engage the community in understanding what the work is that we're doing, which, again, everyone's trying, it's been a real challenge for us. Standardized test scores. The high school staff, parents, and community members have all expressed concerns about the district's test scores. The highest level of concern, concern regards the SAT scores. This problem is complex and it's attributed, but not limited to a number of things, including student engagement, turnover at the high school. The message to the student needs to be clear. The district and parents need to make sure that students understand that the exams are important. Parent engagement, if parents do not value the assessment, the students will not value it. The rigor. If we, if we hold students to a higher level during their freshman, sophomore, and junior years, or K-12, then the, the theory is that they would do better on standardized tests. I think the issue that we face is that when you make everyone take the same test, some kids are not engaged in the test, and that's going to be an interesting topic to explore. I listed intervention. You know, if, if students have more help before they fall behind, then they're more likely to succeed on standardized tests. And instruction. Students get good at what they do. We must teach them to work independently with full ownership in the work. That is really the premise of what I believe about education. If we want students to be strong readers, they have to read every day. If they want to be strong writers, they have to write every day. If they're going to be good at math and applying math concepts to the real world and science, they need to do that regularly. So we have to talk about ways to engage students in doing those activities every day. And I just wanted to say I didn't mention art or music in there, but if they want to be a great artist or a musician, you have to practice every day. So it's the same principle that applies to all areas, including phys ed. If you want to get stronger, you push yourself to your edge every day until your body grows. So the principles are the same no matter what discipline you work in. There's a lot of research behind that concept, and we'll be talking about that more in the future. I am taking 11 staff members to Columbia University this summer to study where they've come up with these philosophies and this type of instruction to bring back information and PD to our district. Student discipline. So folks really want to see some more consistency from all adults regarding expectations and consequences. The cellphone issue is a perfect example. It's not an administrative issue, it's not just a teacher issue, it's an everyone issue. Everyone has to be consistent about the expectations, and we have to work on it together. We also could use some professional development for student discipline and behavior management. Dr. Ross Green is going to be visiting us on, on June 20th, and he will start the work of talking about how to help students who struggle with behavior. I also would say that I would like to talk to our staff about engaging in what's called the responsive classroom, which is an incredible model for helping kids to create a community in their classroom. I view the work of Ross as kind of like intervention when kids can't meet the expectation. Responsive classroom kind of sets the expectation and helps everyone to know what's expected of them. And academic engagement. There's no denying that if you're engaged in school, you're not misbehaving. So it's really important to figure out how to give kids just enough voice and choice so that they're engaged while maintaining the high expectations of the curriculum. Budget. So this was another big area. We need to identify our needs. The NESDEC study and other sources of information are going to be very important as we move forward in the next five to 10 years. We are declining in enrollments, and that is going to mean some really difficult decisions for us as a district and as a community. I've spoken with NESDEC preliminarily, they will be sharing their report in September, but they are working really, really hard. In fact, I just got another really long email with a lot of details and questions today. So I'm really looking forward to that, but I would say that, that we're going to have to talk about our facilities and our student enrollments dropping at length with the budget. And then within that, we need to create efficiencies within the budgets. There are some spots that we could possibly reorganize things to provide some of the resources that I've discussed earlier. I certainly do not think that... I certainly do not think that we need to necessarily ask for more all the time to get the intervention that we need. We need to realign some resources. But we also may need to come to the board with some suggestions for a three-to-five-year plan to improve the resources for kids. Capital needs, there are definitely capital needs. And I've already gone over this, it blends right back to the NESDEC study. And honestly, essentially, what are we going to do with the middle school building? I mean, are we going to renovate it, are we going to do something else? And that will come up through the NESDEC study. We talked about intervention and lines for emergent need. Currently, the budget has very little money, particularly in special education and capital repairs for emergencies. That is very, very concerning. If a student goes in an out-of-district placement, that's a very high-level out-of-district placement, if they move into the district with that placement, we have to pay for it. So, you know, an example of this is that this year, I had to freeze the budget in February because we thought that we had a significant situation with three students. That's not good for kids in our district. We need to have enough of a budget in special education so that when those emergent needs come up, they can be addressed. Similarly, we need lines in the regular education because there are emergent needs there sometimes as well. If we are going to create efficiencies within our teaching staff or our facilities, we need to have the room to make decisions should a number of... My first year as a K-2 principal, I had twenty students move into first grade in one month. That's a whole classroom, right? If there isn't funding available to address that, then we have a problem. And that's really concerning because what I'd like to do is pare the budget down line by line and then have emergency funds for when there are necessary emergencies, when they don't occur. If they occur, the board would approve using them. And then, at the end of the year, if we haven't had the emergencies, it just goes back to the taxpayers. So the goal is for the board and the Budcom to work together to try to figure this issue out. All right, I'll go on to the next one. Hope I'm not talking too fast, but now I'm kind of rolling, warmed up. Safety. So we've done a lot of research, a lot of work's already gone into this. I made these slides over a four-month period. Safety has taken a really great turn for the better in the sense that the superintendent's safety advisory team has really been effective in the sense that we've done a lot of research and tried to figure out what model to use based on best practices. Which, by the way, the concept of telling kids to huddle in place when someone's in the building should we have a serious incident with a first-person shooter is not the philosophy in the future, right? The philosophy is far more active and engaged. So we'll talk about that more in the future. As I said earlier, procedures need to be addressed. And there are some facilities issues, so I'll give you an example. We had a drill recently at the high school where the band and the phys ed people can't hear the announcement because they're playing music and they're bouncing balls or running around in loud. So we have to put lights in those rooms that flash, right? So that they know when the blue light flashes, we're in lockdown. So it's really important that we look at our facilities, not just through the physical layout of the facilities, but also through the practical use of the facility. Some rooms, I didn't hear it in the office, in the central office, we didn't have a speaker in there. So we have to work on these things and make sure that we get everything lined up together. Actually, more accurately, since they built my office, the speaker is in my little office. That was very loud in there. Technology. So as we all know, in the modern day, technology is an integral part of any school district. The district has one-to-one devices for all staff and students, that is fantastic. It sets us up to cut costs for textbooks. And it also sets us up to engage students where they're at. I mean, most kids are very comfortable with technology, frankly, far more so than most of us. The network in our district has been well-maintained and functional. And the primary areas of growth for technology are in the areas of maintenance and software. So the district has many software programs. We currently have a committee of four librarians reviewing every single line of software. The Budcom asked about software last year, and we also were kind of wondering about it. So we're having a big meeting in a few weeks to discuss what the librarians have found. The librarians seem to kind of be the hub for educational software in our schools. It's kind of the media center. I was very impressed by their depth of knowledge and their ability to kind of come together as a team very quickly and start reviewing all the software. Like it says here, you know, the staff kind of feel like there's too much to do with regard to software. So staff will kind of say to me, you know, I've got my computer open and there are nine tabs and I'm trying to teach and I'm not using things. Some of that's professional development about what to use when, but some of it might just be that they're feeling like there's too many different things going. The other thing is that we've got to develop a technology plan that can be funded annual and account to provide for emergencies regarding technology. It's the same thing as I discussed with facilities, regular education, and special ed. You know, Mr. Ficker does an incredible job of getting us deals on technology. But the reality is, is that he does it very carefully and it doesn't have a lot of room should there be a problem, right? So I really want to be clear that the technology is the nervous system of our school district. If we don't have technology running, nothing happens. If the photocopier goes down, running hide principles, okay? Because you can't get anything done. You have to have computers and photocopiers and technology. And Bob does a great job with what he has, but I frankly don't, this is my opinion, I feel like he doesn't have enough in his budget to do things to the best of their ability. And he'll be talking about that next year when we do the budget process. So I wanted to wrap up by saying that probably the biggest piece of information that made my eyebrows go up this year was when our wonderful guidance director, Heidi Levitt, presented the youth risk behavior survey summary to the board a few weeks ago. Just want to take a minute and read a couple of these statistics. Eighty-five percent of our students took this survey. So at the high school, eighty-five percent of kids took the survey. Now typically, on a survey like this, kids don't always disclose things because they're afraid. So usually, the numbers are skewed a little bit downward. Mental health continues to be a significant concern in our community. Twenty-point-five percent of our students have engaged in self-harming behaviors. That's 114 students. Thirty-two-point-eight percent would meet the criteria for depression diagnosis. That's 175 students of 650. Sixteen-point-two percent have seriously considered suicide in the past year. That's 88 students. This is self-reporting, this isn't teacher opinions, this is what kids wrote themselves. Marijuana and alcohol continue to be the most common drugs used. Thirty-seven percent of students have consumed alcohol in the last thirty days, that's 202 kids. And thirty percent have used marijuana, that's 164 kids. And I will tell you, my interviews with students, that's exactly what came up, it's very congruent. I'm sorry, trauma continues to be impacting a lot of kids. Nine-point-one percent of our students report that they have been forced into sexual intercourse. That's 50 students. Eight-point-nine percent of our students report that they have an immediate family member in jail, 44. One-point-five percent of our students report being homeless during the past year, that's nine. And thirty-three percent of our students report living with someone with a drug or alcohol problem. That is very concerning, that's 181 students out of 650. Sandborne's averages are on average 4% higher than the state and national trends. The National Child Stress Network reports that signs of traumatic stress include fear, anger, withdrawal, trouble concentrating, digestive problems, and nightmares. Behavior disorders and acting out can also be symptoms of trauma. And Dr. Green will talk about that on the 20th with our staff. Academic failure, lower dropout rates, and higher rates of absenteeism, expulsion, and suspension are associated with students' exposure to community violence. Now, I want to just share one quick statistic that's not on here. Research by Stan Davis, who's a nationally-recognized bullying expert, who spent probably thirty years of his career studying bullying, came to the conclusion after reading many, many studies and working with hundreds of schools that a student's intelligence typically drops by 35% when they see bullying. Not the bullied student, the kids who see it. Because fear and anxiety disrupts your focus at that, it's that sensitive. Thirty-five percent less intelligence. Now, for the student who's being bullied, it's much lower. But you can imagine for students who live at home with drugs and alcohol problems at their house or have been sexually abused, that focusing on school is not easy for them. So this is why it's very important for us to recognize that the students that we serve have significant needs. And frankly, my opinion is that the staff at the high school in particular has done an incredible job keeping these kids engaged in school. That doesn't mean that we don't have issues to deal with. But there's a lot of positive things happening. So the two points with this is that additional options for extracurricular activities are really important because they help to stop at-risk behaviors. If kids are at school, engaged in activities, they're not out drinking or doing drugs. The other one is that mental health services continue to be critical for the success of our students. So in summary, just so you all know, the report is a lot longer in paper, that will be out tomorrow. It has a lot more detail on each topic. And that will be on the website. I'm not going to post the slides, I'm just going to post the whole paper so folks can read it. And if folks want to ask me questions after reading it, I'm happy to do that. We're going to craft a definition of student success and a plan to support that vision. That step is happening tonight. The ISA committee and a number of people, including all the survey respondents, have done a great job of coming up with a vision. We are then going to have to map that vision backward across the district with indicators so that we know where students are as they move through the K-12 progression in attaining that vision. We need to provide continuing professional development in data analysis, goal setting, and collaboration to support the work of professional learning communities. We need to increase the number of intervention staff, paraprofessionals and teachers, and utilize data analysis and a review of the best practices and instruction to focus student support. We need to provide significant professional development that supports curriculum alignment, differentiation of instruction, and student ownership of the work. Which, by the way, that's a kind of a fancy way of saying, get the kids engaged and excited about school. Establish a uniform and timely expectations for communications to parents in the community, address the reassessment and rigor of the current curriculum and grading system, budget carefully through the analysis of current staff. So that's important, we need to budget through the analysis of current staff, configuration of the district facilities use, and reallocation of resource based on enrollments and needs. And then we need to increase the number and variety of extracurricular offerings and reach out to the community, particularly the senior citizens, to increase our volunteer base. Those are just a few of the steps that would help us to move forward. And obviously, there's a lot of detail. You know, this is just a summary, and there are many small components to each of these. Time and financial funding to sufficiently implement these recommendations are important for successful outcomes. So I had a conversation with one board member the other day, and they just said, you know, I think folks are going to want to move forward with some things to help, but we have to pace ourselves because the taxpayers can only handle so much of a burden. And the schools also, it takes time to realign resources because it feels like a loss sometimes. When enrollments decline, people feel a sense of loss. When enrollments increase, they feel a sense of gain. But the reality is, is that we're just dealing with the number of students that we actually have. So I encourage everyone to consider all of the above-mentioned needs as we enter into the next budget season.
Bob's superintendent's sitting down. I would like a motion to move number 86 to now. It has to do with the school board calendar. Based on what we decide, a number of members have asked if we could possibly table some items on the agenda tonight. And based on what the decision is on number 86, which is the school board calendar, we may do that or not do that depending on what the decision is. So I think this would be a good time to move the school calendar, 86, to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the agenda item 8.6 to the present and discuss it.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Burry, you on us with this?
I, yes, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, just making sure, because I didn't have your smiling face there. I had a picture of the school board.
No, I'm taking the behavior risk stuff right now.
A number of members approached me over the last few months, actually, about having a discussion on meeting once a month instead of twice a month. I asked fellows if she would to very quickly go through some surrounding towns. We have ten here, I'll pass this on to you. Six of them meet once a month, four of them meet twice a month. I was surprised on a couple of them. Exeter, Stratum, Kensington, and Brentwood, once a month. I thought a big district like that. Durham does twice a month, but Dover, again, a large district, does once a month. They asked me to bring this before the board, any discussion. I can pass this around if you'd like to see it.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I did have the motion, but not the right motion.
I still move that we discuss the problem now.
Okay.
Are you moving that we, is the motion just to discuss, or is the motion to...
You need a motion to meet once a month.
Change our calendar.
I moved that we have a motion to discuss, no, retract that. I moved that we have a... I moved that the motion be that we...
Meet once a month.
Meet once.
Five seconds. Okay, all in favor? Of the motion.
The motion is to meet once a month?
Yes.
We're not going to have any discussion on that?
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself again, aren't I?
Yeah, that's all right.
Better ahead than... Okay, okay, discussion.
Is this just a motion that we're passing around?
Your motion, Larry?
Actually, we're in the summertime, you've already canceled the one from July.
We have never had a meeting in July that I know of.
That's what I'm referring to. So if you have no meeting in July, summertime is a good time for committees to get their act together, get the stuff presented. Do that, use your time instead of sitting here in a meeting. Use the time for budget, for committee hearings and get stuff covered and ready to present come fall time. That's one of the problems. Summer is always a good time for you to relax, think things through, and get your act together for when the business starts the next year. And you can already, if you look close, there's going to be a lot of business coming up next year. And I think we should kind of take our time and relax.
So are you proposing one meeting a month or two?
I'm proposing one meeting a month.
For the entire, I'm sorry. Say what you just said again, for when?
I'm proposing one meeting a month with no meeting in July.
One, okay. Just to clarify, you're proposing one meeting a month in perpetuity? Just for the summer.
I'm confused on myself. I thought the motion was that we would meet from now on, one meeting a month.
I got off on track.
Okay, but you started with...
One meeting a month, you don't... We're doing everything within an hour, usually less than an hour, if we are.
That's all right, that's all right, you can forget your point.
And continue on from there. If we need to, we can always have a shadow meeting to pick up the, and if we need more time.
I went back through our past, over the past year, I went through our meeting minutes and I charted the duration of our meetings, and that's actually not correct. Our average meeting time is two, well, 2.35, so two and a quarter to two and a half. We typically start at six and adjourn at 8:15, 8:30. We have had meetings that have gone for three and a quarter hours. That was on January 24. Our last couple of meetings, actually, last, our last meeting in May, on May 2nd, was two and a quarter hours, six o'clock to 8:15. So I'm just, our average is about two and a half. To me, that's about right, that's with meeting twice a month. You know, I made some notes here, but going to one meeting a month, I think in perpetuity, if that's what we're talking about, September, October, November, December, all the way through budget season and into next year, to me means, obviously, if our average is two and a quarter to two and a half per meeting, and that's twice a month, that we're going to have much longer meetings if we move to one a month. We'll have more agenda items. And I guess I'm just going to use tonight's agenda as a very good example of why I think we need two meetings a month, because this agenda is really packed. We've already been meeting for an hour and a quarter, and we've really only made it to item number three. I think, and that's without, I'll just make a note, the numbers that I quoted you were our public meetings, that did not include us being here for non-public sessions. So our administrators, I'll just give an example. I think it's, I feel like that's doing them a huge disservice. If we have them here for such a long period of time, you know, one meeting a month to me means longer meetings, longer leaving times. They have pretty long commutes home, they're not going to be getting home until 11 o'clock at night, and then they're turning around and coming back here at, I don't, 6:00 AM? I'm not sure what time you guys arrive here, but I think that, I think that's not, I think this is not a good idea. And I think on the topic of... And I think in the, on the topic of community engagement, which was a very large topic of Mr. Ambrose's entry plan presentation, that cutting back our ability to interact with the community to once a month is a mistake. I don't, I don't support this motion.
So I'm not going to support or not support it, but I have, I have a thought. And my thought is, I wonder, because there's times of the year that definitely there's more going on than other times, and I wonder if we could split the difference somewhat and have one meeting May, June, August, and two meetings during the busier times.
I know it's your floor, but.
I don't know. I don't know.
One of the things I brought up, we had the last meeting with Fremont, and I asked them what they did. And they have what they call a shadow meeting, which means you would have one meeting a month posted, and then based on the workload, the chairman would call for a second meeting, the shadow meeting, so that if the workload was enough, as you say, then they would say, we're going to have a second meeting, the second would be the third Wednesday of the month. So they cover it that way. I guess what, instead of saying we'll have two and cancel one, they say we'll have one, but if need be, on the shadow meeting, the chair will say, you know, we've got a full agenda, we're going to have a meeting Wednesday night, and post it appropriately. So that's how they handle it. I just wanted to pass that on to you.
That seems like a good compromise. I mean, I, you know, I've got to put in both, because I like the idea of having one meeting, but I like Tammy's point of, I like having the meetings be a manageable amount of time for people that.
Corey, did you have a?
Well, yeah, I do, and I.
Be a little louder, I'm sorry, Corey.
I do. I wish I was obviously there for this conversation. It's a very emotional conversation in some regards, but my question is, if we look at the agenda tonight, how many agenda items are on that, are on our agenda that are reporting out on student outcomes, are reporting out on actual board work that we should be responsible for? I mean, our goal in our jurisdiction is to charge a superintendent to increase outcomes in the district. How many things are on this agenda, and I challenge us all to count them, because I got my number, how many of them are really relative to outcomes? That's comment one. Comment two is, what is the purpose of our board meetings? The purpose of our board meetings are to give reports of those outcomes that we're charging the superintendent for. So why don't we consider, I mean, do we actually have an effective monitoring calendar of that right now? So I think, quite frankly, I'm concerned about, I understand why we might want to be concerned about trimming the meetings down, but to what extent are we meeting and for why? I'm, I'm, did I hear you correctly? So anyways, I guess I question that, to what extent and why? And then go back to you, Larry, why did you make the motion?
I, for one, would love fewer meetings, but unfortunately, we can't afford to have fewer meetings this coming year especially. So I'd rather keep two meetings a month. We have a packed schedule coming up. We have a large number of policy changes we need to look at, given the state of our policy manual. We've got two CBAs to negotiate this year, collective bargaining agreements, and those will have reports in non-public hopefully as the process progresses. We have a major facilities planning decisions to make coming up with our middle school, and this is all on top of the usual budget cycle. So I would prefer to have, keep our two-meeting-a-month policy, and I'd also like to have our meeting on June 20th coming up this month as well.
So what I heard you just describe, Dr. Brown, was.
I need, I need to recognize you here, Corey, because you're off-site, and when you speak up, I can't really acknowledge you yet. Did you finish that?
I'm done.
Okay, all right, Corey, go ahead.
So what I heard you say, Dr. Brown, was, I agree, we obviously have a collective bargaining agreement, you, which I, so that's, that's the work of not the school board, so that'll be happening not in a school board setting. Then I also heard you talk about policy, which is a policy board doing the board work, committee work again. And then I also heard the facility stuff with buildings and so forth, which again is a facilities committee. So if I hear you correctly, there's an awful lot of subcommittee work, necessarily a lot of board work, board meeting work.
Jim, give you a second? Well, Jim hasn't spoken yet, and I haven't spoken yet, so.
I guess we've heard from the people who are asking for this change?
I don't, well, everybody but you has spoken, and I don't think you're one of the people who came to me, so I guess we can say that.
I think it's a horrible idea, to be very blunt. And here's my point of view, to have an effective school, for example, facility or committees don't make decisions, they just make recommendations. To have an effective meeting, school board members must have a detailed agenda, and even more important, we must have time to research the sides of the subjects on it, including considering the ramifications involved, and to consider the impact on all those who will be affected. This might include decisions that impact students, parents, employees, and also the people who pay the bills, the taxpayers. And board members must have time to prepare discussion of the points of view each member thinks need to be considered. To do this conscientiously can require a great deal of homework. It typically takes me many hours to prepare for board meetings. To do it all for one meeting a month would be daunting. I spent a day and a half preparing for tonight's meeting. During a meeting, there must be sufficient time for school announcements and sometimes participation by students and/or staff. There needs to be time for public comment and sometimes presentations by others, like we saw tonight, with the student video. Others there to inform members about proposals and events under consideration. The superintendent does his report, perhaps the business administrator does a report, subcommittees do reports, policies get reviewed, old business gets revisited, and new business gets introduced. Many of those need to be thoroughly discussed before any well-thought-out decision can be made. Sometimes time is of the essence, and sometimes decisions need to be put off until more information can be provided. To do our best of, to our jobs to the best of our abilities and with the degree of thought that the school and public deserve, takes time. Rushing through decisions because the hour is getting late and somebody needs a decision because we will not meet again for another month, not again perhaps for two months if the weather's bad, in my opinion, is not an effective way or a reasonable way to do business. School board positions take commitment and lots of time to do them right, and we are not machines. We need time to evaluate decisions that are likely to impact large numbers of people. We make decisions every year. We likely have some very big ones ahead of us. We've heard a very long list of the things that are going to be coming up that the board is going to be asked to make decisions on. The more we try to cram subjects into one meeting, the less thorough we can be and the more likely we are to make decisions that are faulty. Some have done hastily without sufficient thought could cause problems for the district for years to come. I don't believe this is the time to reduce the time we allow ourselves to make these decisions. It's my opinion that doing that would be a disservice to the people who put their trust in us and elected us to do the best job we can. And for each of those reasons, I'm 1,000% against going to one meeting a month. Thank you.
Move the motion?
Well, I would like to speak, maybe because of my training, I don't like hypotheticals, and that's, no matter which side you're on, there, well, this could happen, that could happen, we might need to, it could snow, you know, I agree with all of that. So I guess I'm trying to maybe be solemn in here and split the difference. We're not going to meet in July because we don't. School's just starting. We have, I believe, one meeting scheduled in August, which gives us September, October. So what I'm going to suggest is perhaps you amend your motion, it's up to you, that we revisit this in November, which would give us really two months plus a shadow if needed. So we could end up with two meetings. I mean, if, if the agenda, the superintendent I sit down, the agenda is, you know, oh, we're going to have a second meeting this month. So I guess what I'm saying is, rather than this could happen, that could happen, I'm talking one meeting this month, no meeting next month, as has always been the case, one August, one September, one October, then November, the first meeting in November, we readdress it. Now we've got a history of how it's working, because we will have shadow ones if we need them. I agree with everyone, to tell you the truth, so I'm looking for some kind of proof that our viewpoint is the correct viewpoint, if I can use that term. So I don't know if that helps you maybe amend your motion that the November 1st, we would readdress it, or if you want to stay with your motion, I don't know. But I don't like hypotheticals, maybe could-be's, as it's me, it's me, you know.
I would, I would change my motion. I would.
Amend it.
I would amend it to state that I prefer one meeting a month.
Not you prefer, but.
Okay. I move one meeting a month through June, August, September, November, October, and November.
I'm confused here, I'm sorry, Larry. You're talking one meeting June, no meeting July, one meeting August, one September, one October.
One meeting June, no meeting July, one meeting August, one meeting in September, one meeting in October, reevaluated at the November meeting.
Okay.
And in between time, if a shadow meeting is desired and needed, it would be scheduled.
Well, I'm looking for a second on the amended.
Yes.
On the, yeah, the amended.
Amended motion.
So I'm going to second that because it was kind of my idea, and now we can have discussion on that. So what do you, I'm just looking for information, go ahead.
I think this whole idea is a huge abdication of our responsibilities. If we're going to have shadow meetings, what we should schedule is two meetings a month, and if we don't need the meeting, not have the second meeting. That, this school board has had two meetings a month for years and years and years, and they barely got the stuff done that had to be done. It's not hypothetical at all. Tammy read you the hours that we spend in these meetings. You can't cut that off. We've got more work to do in the next year than has been done in the last four. There's nothing hypothetical about it, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, I, okay.
Just to respond to Mr. Mason, the advisory committees are just that, and we develop recommendations, which the full board has to approve outside of the finance committee, which does have some autonomy. I've got a lot of policies to go over and look at this summer. Most of them need revisions, and we need first and second reads. The board has to approve those, and I'm going to need every meeting I can get. As policy chair, I object to this at this time. Perhaps next year, when things are a little less busy, we can revisit this. Also, we did cancel a meeting this spring due to a short agenda. I asked that we keep that meeting because we had board goals to look at. I was told that we wanted to defer it because the superintendent had developed his entry plan, but we could have discussed our goals without the entry plan being ready yet. So I really object to this. We have a lot to do, we really need the time.
Move the motion?
I'll move it.
Can I make a friendly amendment, Larry?
Yeah, well, we just, we have a, we have a move the motion motion, so really, I can't do it now, Corey.
Understood, understood.
So I've got to move the motion and see if the, see how it goes, okay. So all in favor of the motion as amended?
Can it be read back?
Pardon?
Can the motion be read back? I just want clarity.
Sure.
One meeting in June, none in July, one in August, one in September, one in October, one in November, we need to reevaluate, and that's down to two months.
So you're really talking.
The shadow meeting is needed, we have to schedule that as well. For April.
So you're really talking two months. Talking two meetings, we can't, well, we wouldn't have, yeah.
No, because we had two meetings in August last year. We had two meetings in August, September, October.
All right, we're talking, in either case. So all in favor of Larry's motion? Corey, are you there? I'm sorry, I can't see you on my camera here.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
Are you, are you far the motion? I'm sorry, I can't see your hand.
No, I'm abstaining when you get to the abstentions.
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
He's starting to abstain.
You're abstaining, okay. Okay, opposed? Okay, so that's two for, three against, and two abstentions. The motion does not carry.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yep.
That the people in favor of one meeting a month resign their positions and let some people work, we're going to do about two meetings a month. I'm sorry, this really is.
The chair does not recognize that motion.
Okay.
We're on to the next item.
I'd like to make a favor, a motion.
Oh, Corey, the, okay, you have a motion, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I would like to motion that we go ahead and we establish a, I don't, do we even have a task force? I'd like to go ahead and, it might, I'd like to go ahead and perform research on highly effective boards and what their governance models look like and how often they are meeting. So I'd like to get a report from that.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what committee we can ask to do that.
I will tell you, I think I know what you're saying, and I'm going to ask you if you could bring that up when you're here rather than offsite, because being offsite is very difficult for me anyway.
Understood.
To get what you're saying, so, yeah, I mean, you just want more information and possibly we discuss it in the future, is that what you're saying?
I'd like to bring research behind the conversations and let the research show us what highly effective boards do. We'll leave it at that.
All right. We'll put that on the agenda for the future.
Not a problem. Yeah.
All right, so now we're at committee meeting, so committee reports, rather. Policy.
We met on May 30, and we'll discuss the policies on the agenda tonight. We did not meet tonight as planned, only on the 30th, and our next meeting is to be announced.
I have a question, because a question entered my mind when you said how much policy. The school board has a schedule of what policies are going to be addressed. Will you be staying with that schedule?
I would like to revise that policy first.
Okay. The reason I say that is because you talked about the amount of work, and that could change, but it would change based on having to change the policy, because historically, we have had a review of the policies so many each year. And when you said we have so many to do, that's, that made me think that perhaps you had more than.
We really don't have the luxury of going through, say, J and K this year. We have a lot of policies and other sections that need review.
Right, but, but we have always, we have always had a review of so many every year. All right, you're changing, you're saying we may probably revise that.
Well, we can revise other policies.
No, no, I understand. It's just that I was taken back a little bit when you said we have so much to do, because I thought.
Well, that's according to the NHSBA School Board Association.
Right, no, no, I understand.
Tom is asking to be recognized.
Yeah, okay, I understand, it's just that I thought there was a mouthful each, each year rather than a whole meal, you know.
Well, hopefully, it'll taper off.
I'll just speak to this for a moment, because we have a lot of policies that need to be revised. That's the good reason why we'll probably take the chair of the policy committee and myself a couple of days of sitting down and going through them and then bringing them to committee for review and then. Right, there's a lot of policies, so we do have a cycle, but I think that Will is working furiously to wrap up, Will at the NHSBA, to wrap up our policy review. And once that's finished, we are going to need to talk about how to review and adopt all of those policies. My opinion would be that once this systematic review is done, we would then have to set up a new schedule, because it really kind of, we're doing the whole thing, all of them at one time. So I agree with the chair in the sense that we need to have a schedule, and I agree with the head of the policy committee that we also need to kind of stay that for right now, because honestly, there's some policies that are really tricky that need to be addressed immediately now on schedule. I think that's the best way to put it.
I accept.
EISA committee met on May 16th, all members were in attendance. We voted to alter our meeting time, we had been meeting the third Wednesday of every month. We are changing that to the second Wednesday of every month at 4:30, although I'm, we're not sure that we're going to be meeting next Wednesday. So, that's sort of, the next meeting time is not available at the moment. At that meeting, we spent most of our time discussing the student success framework, which is on the agenda for later on tonight. We also had a presentation from Mr. Turemell regarding a pilot program that the district is undergoing, and some information on one of the, one of the pieces of the student success framework, which is the defensive learning, I'm not sure how it's labeled on the... But to, if one of our, one of the objectives is for students, when they graduate, to be able to defend their learning, and make some sort of a presentation. And in order for them to do that, it kind of need to work backwards, and make sure that they have these, those presentation skills. And so, he, you know, there was a video that he showed us of some other, some other efforts that are being done in other districts around the country. And there are a couple, there are three different programs that Sandborn is working on right now. One of them is actually the League of Scientists, that we saw the video, the sixth grade. We saw the video earlier, and there's some work, I guess, that they're doing in the elementary school to implement student-led parent conference, parent-teacher conferences that are more student-led, so the students have some, get some experience in a kind of safe supportive environment of being, of leading and working on their presentation skills. And then, the sophomore class has a genius hour that they're doing some, and job shadowing. And they're doing some exhibitions to the eighth graders of some of the work that they're doing. And as I said, the next meeting is not firmly scheduled yet.
Could I just add to that, our, our students who participate in extended learning opportunities and internships already do a version of the presentation that the committee's discussing? I attended three of those the other day, they're fantastic. And so, it's, it's going to be more thoroughly discussed on agenda item... Well, whichever one has the...
Seven point three.
Thank you, I'm sorry, it's on, yeah, seven point three. So, we'll talk about that in just a minute.
Facilities?
Facilities met tonight, and we discussed the status of the demolition bids that we talked about at the last board meeting, and also the crafting of the bid document that we approved for the hazardous abatement portion of the demolition. Those are, the hazardous waste bid doc is being prepared. They've had to do a testing to determine, you know, the areas that need to be dealt with, and they're in the process of doing that. And we hope to get the bid and the scope of work, or rather, the scope of work fairly soon. Once that comes to us, then the bidding will go out, or the bidding on the actual removal will go out to companies that do that work. We got an update on the radio and repeater project, which is designed to link the different schools with each other, so that they can respond to emergencies, and also links to first responders, and it involves two-way radios and a repeater system that boosts the signal enough to communicate between all the schools. We have the radios, the repeater is in process, and we were told tonight that Mr. Turemell was, was very, very involved in acquiring awards for grants that will pay for this. So, kudos to Mr. Turemell. The repeater, oh, the other part of that is there's FCC licensing involved, and that's in process. We also looked at some areas of a safety plan, and we had preliminary discussions about that. We've asked for more information. And also, there's an issue with the Swayze Jim Roof, as Mr. Ambrose mentioned, and we're looking for bids to see what the costs of the work needed there will be. That's pretty much it.
Mr. Chair, could I just note that Mr. Turemell raised $40,000 for walkie-talkies, and not just the walkie-talkies, but the ability for us to communicate from building to building throughout the district on the repeater, and all the safety folks at the same time. So, you can change channel and talk to the different police and firefighters in the future, and I just think that's really great.
Public relations?
Public relations met this week on June 4th. We reviewed our annual goals, which I went over with the full board at our last board meeting. We discussed developing a public survey to rate our efficacy as a board. Assessment is something that we're very invested in, and the board also needs to undergo an assessment process. So, what I would like to ask the board members at this time is if you guys can send me what you think would be appropriate questions for us to put out about how we're doing, and so that I can draft up a survey-type thing that we can look at at the next board meeting, hopefully, and vote on to get it out over the summer, so that the public has a chance to give us feedback on how we're doing. Does that seem like something? So, if those, just two or three questions apiece, if you have some, that you would like, that you think would be appropriate things for people to be answering about us. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So, if you can email those to me by June 30th, that would be helpful. And I'll try to get a sample done for our first meeting in August, so we can look at it and hopefully get out. We're going to be working on updated school board posters. There used to be posters at each of the schools that had like the school board members on it, and a little bit about them, when the board meetings are, the committees, and those have, they were outdated, and now they're gone, and who knows where. So, I'm going to be working on getting some new ones out of those. We're going to be publicizing volunteer opportunities. Mr. Ambrose talked about trying to get more volunteers in the school. We, parents are naturals that come into the schools. We have a lot of undiscovered talent in volunteers that aren't parents in the community. And we really want to get people involved and into the schools. So, we'll be looking at those opportunities more, and trying to get that off the ground this summer. I will say, right now, there's organizations related to the schools that need volunteers, and you do not have to be a parent to be part of it, which is like music boosters, sports boosters, the PTOs at all the schools, you know, the schools need volunteers. So, people that are looking for ways to get involved, maybe a way to connect with other people, spend time with young people, it's an awesome opportunity, so certainly take advantage of those. What else? Oh, so, just my two cents as Chairperson of the Public Relations Committee. I just want to remind everybody here, my fellow board members, administrators, and audience, that educators are working really, really hard to wrap up their year. And it's really important that we're all very mindful of that. People are, you know, strung out, parents are strung out, you know, there's a lot of committee work going on. Administrators are putting out flyers, the end of the year is great for some kids, looking forward to summer. For other kids, it's not a happy countdown to spending a few months away from a supportive environment at school. So, I just hope, from a public relations perspective, everyone needs to really take a breath and be mindful that people are under a lot of pressure, and that we need to stay focused on taking care of the kids, that is why we're here. Our next meeting is on July 2nd. Oh, well, I'm proposing for people on PR that our next meeting is on July 2nd at 10:00 in the morning. So, that will piggyback on the other one. One more thing, public relations-wise, this is for you, or maybe for Phyllis, which is, I noticed that committee minutes, not just for public relations, but for everything, are not updated online.
Okay, thanks.
So, we need to do that, so that, we want public to come to our committee meetings, so I want to make sure the public knows what's been going on with them.
I'd just like to reiterate that, we recently had an ISA committee meeting, where a lot, where some parents showed up, and some teachers were there, and administrators, and it was great. It made a big difference, and it really helped us to gauge whether or not what we're working on is going to work for the folks who are living with students and doing the work. So, I encourage anyone out there who wants to get involved in committee meetings to please come.
Personnel?
Personnel, me again. We met on May 21st. We reviewed our priorities, which, just to remind the public, our priorities for the Personnel Committee were to work on the superintendent evaluation for the coming year, as well as get an update on administrative evaluations and the process for that. And at this point, Mr. Ambrose, I think you said all the administrator evaluations are done. We will be meeting again on July 1st at 9:00 o'clock in the morning, and at that point, we're going to be doing some hard-looking at developing a revision of the superintendent evaluation process that we can then bring to the full board. We discussed what I previously mentioned as PR, that the board also needs an evaluative tool so that the public can evaluate us. We reviewed the draft of the administrative recruiting procedure, that policy is going to be presenting later today. And, let's see. I do want to mention that we also looked back at the subcommittee goals, and, how's it put? We have a policy, BDE, Boards Committee Missions and Statements of Purpose. And actually, it says under the Personnel Subcommittee that recommend to the Chair of the Board the process to be used, and the people to be involved in selecting administrators for the district. So, I actually, as the Chair of the Personnel Committee, I don't mind that policy worked on this. I was actually on the policy committee until this year, so I also worked on this policy we'll be looking at later. I really don't care at the end of the day who's working on something, as long as the hiring process ends up being fair, equitable, and efficient, but we'll be talking about that later, and I have more to say then. So, that's it.
SST?
All right, that's me. We met on May 14th at 5:00 PM at the Sequo School Technology. The SS, a couple highlights from the meeting, where the SST recently had nine students complete an Adobe CertiPort certification. The CertiPort certification allows for students to approach tasks and projects in various ways, working out solutions that they could not have before, and furthermore, helping get more involved in the creative process at a new level. Of those nine students throughout all the districts that are sending them, we had two. So, kudos to our team, our students. The graduating class 2018 from SST had 252 students, with Sandborn having nearly nine, just over 90. Certificate ceremony was held on May 31st at the Exeter High School. We also had elected a new governing board chair, Superintendent Valerie McKinney of Epping School District, actually, was self-nominated herself, so it was unanimous. And last but not least, our next governing board meeting is actually August 27th, 2018, and that will actually be going right into a budget discussion for us right up there at the SST.
I too attended that meeting, but I also just wanted to say that I attended the graduation ceremony over at the SST in Exeter, and it was amazing, heartwarming, really, truly wonderful. The number of scholarships the kids received, and the pride in their work was unbelievable. And I just want to let the public know that, is it Timberland Boots? Not Timberlane District, the Timberland Boots donated boots to all the kids, and they're expensive. So, it was really, I think it was one of the biggest donations they've ever received in terms of financial, but I just can't speak highly enough of the incredible job that the director is doing over there, Margaret Callahan, she's really fantastic.
Seminary discussions?
Haven't met recently, but we plan to meet on June 12th.
Thank you. Budget?
The Budget Committee has met, we have the organizational meeting, and we will be meeting tomorrow.
Student Council?
So, this is my last one, so, Adam, take notes. So, this past weekend, Student Council held our annual plant sale, where we receive plant donations from a variety of garden clubs and private citizens that we then sell and donate the proceeds to charity. And this year, we were able to donate $358 to the Breast Cancer Research Foundation, which was awesome, because we get slightly fewer donations than we have in past years, but we still like got a good amount to be able to donate. All three lower grades just had their Student Council elections, which all went very smoothly. Tomorrow, National Honor Society students are going on a field trip to the three elementary schools and reading to them, because, after we just donated many boxes of books to all the elementary schools, so we're hopefully going to be reading some of those books to them. Can you know about them? Yeah. We're winding down a little bit, and hope that I'll see a lot of you guys, hope that I will see a lot of you guys at graduation.
Public comment? A second, I thought we weren't going to have any, yeah, it looks like we've got two. Who wants to be first?
Jamie Fitzpatrick from Newton, just a couple of comments I wanted to make for him tonight. One is I want to thank the board members for not cutting the meetings in half. I think that would have been a terrible idea. There's a lot of work, needs to get done, reduce the amount of time to work on it, not a good idea. Also, shadow meetings, that does not help the public get engaged. As a member of the public, I can't schedule around whether or not you may or may not schedule a meeting in one week or another week. So, if I'm going to try to show up, I really need to know when the meetings are scheduled for. I'd also point out, in Superintendent Ambrose's summary, he suggested in one of the summary slides that one of the fixes to the grading issues that were raised is better communication and explanation of the grading system for the public. I would submit for consideration that the negative feedback is based upon an opposition to the grading system, not a misunderstanding of it. Thank you.
Barry Gluck from Newton, really have two comments. One, I wanted to also agree, thank the board for not cutting the meetings in half. You guys have a tremendous amount of work to do, and if one of the goals is to improve community engagement, I don't think that would have been served by having half as many meetings. That said, I also wanted to thank Superintendent Ambrose for his very thorough presentation. He obviously spent a lot of time talking to a lot of people, and put a lot of thought into that, and I think there, there's a lot of good ideas there. I'm not sure whether, there was, I think, we all probably had individual things that we would have liked to see, and I don't know if this falls under the category of, yeah, it's covered, but it was a summary, or this is just something that wouldn't be covered under this. And that is, you were, there was, you discussed the need to improve academic rigor, and you talked about, which is great, and you talked about looking at ways of improving, being proactive before you go to special, you know, increasing the resources available to help students avoid having to have a, move into special ed. But the other side of that is, we look at our district's honors programs and the AP programs, and frankly, there's a lot of room for improvement with our district's AP programs and the AP scores. They, when you compare where we are across other districts, it's not good. And I'm wondering if your program involves more resources, or taking a harder look at how we teach our AP courses and our honors courses as well? Oh, I'm sorry, I did have one other thing. This has to do with, um, community engagement. It's a suggestion. These school board meetings, as you know, are long. Members of the community, when they come, come for various reasons. Some is just to hear what's going on, uh, but sometimes it's to, that there's an important, um, item to be voted on, and they want a chance to speak before you vote, which you have, but there should also be the opportunity to react. So I propose, because engagement is a two-way communication, it's not just sit here and listen. So, um, I would suggest that you implement two opportunities for community comment, one early before any voting happens, and one towards the end after voting happens so that the community members have a chance to respond to what's taking place. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mary Seer from Kingston. Um, I just have an observation, and it's directed to the Public Relations Subcommittee. There was, um, dialogue about maybe doing a survey to the public to gather perception of how the, um, public relation, how the board, um, is perceived and, and being, um, appreciated and what changes could be made. And I contend that perhaps that might not be the best use of resources and time, because I think if you want to solicit this public engagement, you should try to get people to your meetings. And if they're not coming to the meetings, then they will let you know how they feel about your performance at the polls. So I, I would rather you place your time and effort in other areas that will directly affect students. Thank you.
We have a member who is not a Kingston or Newton resident, but he is on Fremont School Board, so I would suggest we allow him to speak. Any objections to that?
A parent as well, if that helps. So I have a student here. So I just want to give you my two cents on the school board meeting changes. So when Fremont made the change a couple of years ago, I, and this is just my personal opinion on this, I really wasn't for it at first, but one of the things I noticed was, so one of the things we did, we scheduled all our meetings that made it the year before. So we have all our meetings for the next full year scheduled out. We have our parent meetings and we have our shadow meetings. So they're all on the calendar. I wasn't in favor at first, but I think for us it's worked well. We don't, we don't always stick to the one meeting a month, like budget during budget season, fall, usually two, three meetings a month. During, after budget season, we probably have the one meeting a month, but we just, we agreed as a board ahead of time and made you, these are our scheduled meeting dates. And we have them on our calendar. We just, you know, what we normally do, worst case is the meet, like we have a meeting next Tuesday, we'll say, do we need the shadow meeting that we have on June 29th right now? For us, it's worked. I, I, at, at being, I wasn't a fan of it, but I think it's worked for us. Um, we've been able to get our stuff done. You know, I don't think it's really elongated our meetings much, we just became more efficient in some of our meetings, but what it's worked. Thank you.
Hi, Annie Collier, Newton. Number one, I want to thank Superintendent Ambrose for a very thorough, um, entry study. I'm looking very much forward to reading the details of it. Um, I appreciate that this was an overview. I have probably more questions than answers, but at least I know what questions that I'm going to be seeking answers for. Um, number two, so thank you, and thank you for the time involved in that and for the involvement with all levels of the community and with the teachers and parents, um, as well as students. I had a question on SST. It's my understanding that it's opening up to sophomores. Is that next year or is that still a couple of years in the future?
That is next year.
Okay. Is there a plan to add more spaces for that, or we have 100 slots, as I understand it? Are we planning to be adding more, or will that become something? How is that going to be handled? That was my question.
Sandy Rogers Osterloh from Kingston. So one of the things I want to do, Mr. Broderick, is stick to some facts. So y'all were elected to the board to do the job, and I would like to see that happen. As a budget committee member who does not receive a stipend, um, I'd like to see y'all, um, get paid for the meetings you actually show up to instead of, and if you are going to cut meetings, then let's cut your stipend. I didn't run for, or have been nominated twice and then run for this position to, um, as Mr. He said, take my time and relax. Attending meetings is super important, and attending to the business of the community and our school district is very important. We do have students that come and do presentations. We have a student on our board. There should be some consideration for the length of meetings. Uh, the record does speak for itself, which is a fact. We'd like to have the community involved. It'd be nice if more people came to these meetings, but I do believe that people watch the videos, and I do believe that people care. And, uh, for Ms. Lidle, just because my four kids are not young anymore doesn't mean I don't have experience. We're asking for volunteers in the district. I'm a volunteer. My kids are all grown, but I did send four kids through public school and college. You don't have to have kids at home in order to serve on these committees as a volunteer. And that's a fact, not hypothetical. I really encourage the board to continue to meet regularly so that the budget committee can do their work. We try to work collaboratively, and I would like that to be respected. And if we're meeting twice a month or more, and we need to meet with you folks because of what's required, it'd be great to know that we can. And also, if you're not going to, since, the reason why I'm bringing this up is not hypothetical, it's fact, that you are going to review this again in November. We have work, a lot of work to do for the budget, and I'll just conclude, because I think you get my drift. The Superintendent, great presentation, been looking forward to NESDEC study and all the work that you've done to gather this information. I see a lot of information that I have felt the same on. I'm like, I like seeing it in print rather than people arguing when, about it. Um, I want to see the real study, you know, when we have that, and, um, I'm looking forward to that because it's going to speak for itself. But you said tonight, two things, we need to realign our resources, and you said there's much work to do, and I don't see how we can accomplish those tasks, especially after your presentation, if we want to take our time and relax. Thank you.
I, I, I would like to clarify something because now I'm a bit confused. The motion did not pass. We will be meeting twice a month, and it would not come up again unless a member happens to bring it up, but I wouldn't expect that to happen. So we will be meeting at least twice a month, um, but with the comments that were made, I have a feeling that some people here or perhaps at home think that it passed. We're going to be meeting twice a month, okay? Yeah, yeah, okay. I, I, can you see where I got confused?
Sandy Rogers Osterloh from Kingston. Would you please read the motion back where it said that you'll review this in November?
But the motion didn't pass.
It did not pass.
No.
But that is the presentation.
No.
That was provided to us tonight.
No.
In the motion. It was in the motion. The motion did not pass.
That's correct.
Correct. Right. Okay, it will not be reviewed in November.
No. Unless some board member brings it up.
Exactly. So I'm asking you then, when it does come up again, or if it does come up again, that we have an opportunity again to give public comment on that. Thank you.
Just to let you know, I sent emails to all board members about this, which is why they were pretty well prepared tonight, but I cannot stop any member for bringing up a motion and then it is seconded and then discussed. But as of now, it's my understanding, does the board concur, that the issue is done?
Yeah.
Right, right, we voted down, yeah.
Cheryl Gannon. Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. The motion did not pass, but there was a lot of discussion, and, um, a couple of people abstained. It was pretty close. I think the people here who have spoken, and I'm going to echo, um, what they have said, that, um, for, as public input, should this motion come up again, there are people giving their input to you is what they feel. Um, I would agree that I feel that meeting twice a month, um, is necessary. If you have to shorten the agenda, go for it, but I think those meetings should be planned, they should be publicized, and people should have an opportunity from the public to come and view and participate in the meeting. So I appreciate those who, um, voted against that and would encourage that the, uh, agenda and the, the schedule stay the same. Uh, you may want to look at streamlining the agenda if you feel that the agenda is too long or the meetings are taking too long. I also would like to thank Dr. Ambrose for-
Mr. Ambrose.
Mr. Ambrose, sorry.
Don't want to mislead anyone.
You did so well, I just promoted you.
Oh, thank you. Cheryl, that is truly an honor coming to me, I would say sincerely.
I'm looking forward to reading the full report online. Um, I would support the, um, uh, looking at the cell phone policy. I think kids, when they're in this building, need to concentrate, in any building, in school building, need to concentrate on what's happening in their classrooms. If you want to engage students, they need to not have cell phones. And teachers should also abide by that policy.
Everyone.
Anyone in the building.
Hey Cheryl, hold on, I gotta take a break.
And now on the agenda, the seminary. Um, seminary has been on the agenda. I like the agenda format that we've started using here, and that there's kind of standard things that are always there, and if there's nothing to discuss, we're briefly discussing. Seminary has been on many agendas. Things have been going on at the seminary campus, talking about demolition of buildings, some budgetary impact. Let's talk about possibly, um, doing something with the roof at the Swayze Gym, um, talking about renting a building there. But I have yet to hear what's going on with the negotiation with the town of Kingston. I do realize there are things that are private and can't be discussed, but I brought this up at the last meeting. I think that we, who voted for that and see this on the agenda time and time again, need some kind of a general update as to what is going on, because this district is putting things in the budget to spend money on this campus, and we don't even know what's happening with it. So I would really appreciate, I see your meeting on June 12th, if at the next board meeting, there's something that you can tell us, not the confidential stuff, but give us some idea of what's going on. Thank you.
I don't usually respond to public comment, but I just want to say that frankly, it's almost all confidential right now. So it's not that we don't want to share, we are working really hard to get to the point where we can share. So I do acknowledge your request, and would understand why you would feel that way and the public would feel that way, and I want folks to know that we are working really hard so that we can share.
Abby Calvert, Sanborn student. So I first wanted to thank the Superintendent for the wonderful presentation, he did. But I would also like to raise awareness to the concerning statistics of that risk survey. Like when I saw that, that really, really worried me, thinking of all the kids that I know, and thinking of the fact that probably some of them answered those questions in a concerning manner. Um, and I wanted to ask the board, I actually wanted to plead with the board, to continue to look into this, to continue to work to fight for our students and to fight for the students' voices, and to fight for their ability to get good counseling, which we have here, but to continue that, and to continue to work hard for them, and that, that's all. So thank you.
Jack Josec, Newton. I, I think that, uh, under, under 8.8, the annual report, right to know, I believe you're going to discuss the, uh, employee list.
That's one of the things that's on there, there's actually two, yeah.
Okay. Uh, just to, um, refresh everybody's memory on, um, school board meeting at 419, um, I'll read it to you. Move the board director superintendent include the 2016 annual report posted on the SAU homepage in amendment which lists all employees' names in alphabetical order, along with each employee's district position, step level, years employed, and, um, employed, and SRA annual salary and district paid benefits, excluding HIPAA-related dental and health insurance. Uh, and, uh, it was passed unanimously. That was the vote. And then again up in, uh, when we looked at it again, honey?
I'm sorry, Jack, just, we used to say pass unanimously. I think it was recommend, it was not recommended to pass unanimously.
Vote all in favor. That's what, that's what I'm looking at, the minutes I printed out.
Um, I'm looking at the 216 warrant, we'll, we'll discuss it.
Anyway, my concern is that we discussed it, uh, before the meeting started, and, uh, you said that the lawyer said it was illegal because the, uh, we're asking for HIPAA information. Did anybody touch off with the lawyer that say that you made a motion to eliminate those from the list and that made it legal?
Okay. Uh, this is actually public comment. I'll be talking about that if the board wants, I'll do it right after this so that it's still fresh in our minds, but we're public comment, we don't usually respond, but it's on the agenda, so I will be. Uh, Barry, we try to have one person, but if you can make it quick, please. I do not like setting precedents.
I know. Barry Gluck, Newton, and I apologize for taking two bites at the end. I just wanted to point out quickly, the confusion, the, the discussion earlier about what happened with the vote, um, I think is a perfect case study in why it would be helpful to have two opportunities, one in the beginning and one towards the end for public comment, because it was obviously a subject that members of the public really care about and wanted the opportunity to voice their opinions before there was a vote. In this case, they didn't have that opportunity until after the vote, so I think a lot of what you were getting were the comments after the vote, uh, it would have been, this, this is a perfect example of why it would be helpful to have one before and one later. So that's all.
Tom and I set the agenda, one thing I wrote down, agenda, two meetings, it'll be on our ex-agenda. Okay, so, um- I'm, I'm sorry.
Could we have like a five-minute break?
You want a five-minute break? We can have five minutes. Before we do that, could I ask you, because Jack just brought up something, and I have a feeling there may be public who are waiting for that discussion before they can leave, um, do you want me to go right on to 86? It's really an information, uh, thing, not really necessarily discussion. I think I sent everybody copies of it, um, but because people asked why the thing wasn't in the report, I have legal counsel's information, I also have a right to know information I want to share. It's really FYI. You want to do that next, after we come back? Better with the board? Okay, all right. So five minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Let's get back. Okay, so, a couple of things that were brought up, uh, Jack brought up about a warrant article that, um, was put on in 2016, and he read the warrant article, but very quickly, um, the warrant article read, and I'm reading from the town report, I'm sorry, I'm reading from the town report, um, Article 7, a list of employees submitted by petition to direct the board, the Sanborn Regional School Board, to include a list of employees who work for the school district in the annual report starting in 2016 and continuing each year until voted out by the voters. The list should be alphabetical and last name followed by the first name. The list should show the following. Name, position held, salary for the year reported, total cost of employee to the district, step level. Now, there's an asterisk. Total cost should include the following. All the benefits, including retirement costs- All the benefits, including retirement costs and life, dental and health premiums paid for the district. Each year when there are warrant articles, we ask our lawyers to comment on them. Our lawyer commented the following on Article 7. Article 7 is problematic in that it directs the inclusion of health, dental, and life premiums. The health premiums are protected information under HIPAA and should not be disclosed. It can be traced to individual employees. Only total health costs can be disclosed in an aggregate basis. Moreover, it is the school board that is changed with determining the contents of the annual report. While voters can certainly request certain material to be included in the report, the mandatory material must be in the report is controlled by state statute. As such, this article is advisory. I suggest that at the meeting, the word "direct" in the first line be changed to "request", and that the statement at the end of the article be added that this article is advisory only. In the alternative, it should be clearly stated by the moderator that the article is advisory only. Okay. Now, the board should have paid a little more attention, let's say. Because of this, there was a board motion, and it voted unanimously, that we do it. It was not included in the report. Probably should have been. I'm gonna say probably because there might be some legal reason why we can't. I have talked to different board members. What we're going to do is address this again in the fall, you know, when it comes time for the report, and we will address that, and I would assume, based on the past report, it would therefore be included, not including the health issues. Because it appears that it should have been put in. Now, I have a personal problem with this, only the legal bit that I know. It didn't have what they call a severability. Severability means that, and you'll see them in your ordinances in town, if part of the statute turns out to be thrown out by a judge, the rest of the statute still pertains. That didn't show here. You cannot, and I sent emails, you cannot take out and pick pieces of a statute and say, well, we'll pay attention to this but not that. But that apparently is all now minutia, because apparently we should have put in the report, in the last report, what we voted on last year. So we will be addressing it, all right? And again, this is FYI. I have another FYI that I think is very important, and as chairman, I think I would be remiss if I didn't pass it on to you. And it has to do with a Supreme Court decision on the right to know law. If I can find it. Yes, here it is, here. They have changed, as near as I can figure, I, yes?
Can you just, I think it's important.
I'll pass this out as you do.
Tammy Mahoney just asked a question. It is, Pete motion, you didn't do a formal motion and approval, but everyone agreed to move 8.8 to right after the break.
I'm sorry.
Annual report, I understand.
Thank you.
The right to know part, is that included?
Do you want to leave that at 8.8? Yep, they were supposed to go together. I think that's what Chair brought up. Yep, 8.8 covered both. Sorry, just trying to be, I mean.
I am looking for, and I know I had them. The right to know. Oh, did I already pass them out? Oh, did I send these to you on email? I believe I did.
Yes.
Okay, so everybody has a copy, all right. It has always been my understanding that the right to know law, when you have concerning meetings, was spontaneous meetings didn't come under the right to know law, and you needed a quorum, and you had to make decisions. Well, apparently, there's a Supreme Court decision, and it's Oyster, Taylor voices Oyster River, and I'm going to read just the next one, because I think it's very germane to the school board members. If you happen to be on other committees or groups, you may be a member of the Boosters Club, there is a published meeting, and you discuss, and let's say there's two of you, only two of you, that's not a quorum, only two of you, but it's a planned meeting, and you discuss school issues. Based on, as I interpret this, and I have the Supreme Court decision, and you all have this, that would constitute a meeting and should be published. And I will just read the last paragraph from Diane Garro, our attorney. In the right to know law case against the Oyster River School Board, a resident claimed that a meeting of less than a quorum of the school board to explore an interim superintendent process violated the right to know law. That was that specific case. The Superior Court agreed and found that those meetings violated the right to know law because the meetings were planned for the purpose of discussing matters relating to official business of the district, even though there were fewer than a majority. There was no quorum. I'm giving this information only to people because I have to, as your chairman, protect the school board, and I know sometimes people have other organizations they're with, to when it comes to more than one member in that organization, whether it be Boosters Club or PTA or whatever, if you have a planned meeting and you discuss information, it could be construed as a public meeting that should have been noticed. There's the saying, ain't against the law until the judge says so. So I'm not going to go down the road of this kind of, that kind of, but I wanted you to be aware. So I gave you a copy of all of it. I have the Supreme Court decision, if you need a case, a copy of that. I just wanted to let you know that when it comes to meetings with other people, we need to be now very careful. Emails, you know, we don't want to, I don't want to go down the road and have long discussions on it, but I wanted to let you know, you need to be very, very careful when it comes to meeting with people and discussing issues pertaining to the school board, or any matter. You could be, you could be planning, you could be budget committee, you could be any other committee. Just be real careful when you start discussing school issues.
Can I ask a question?
And it should be right notice. You may interpret this different from me, that's okay. My job was to advise you, to let you know, you don't want to get jammed up, that's all I'm really doing here. So we can now go on unless we have, I don't think we need someone.
Laurie's asking to speak.
Oh, Laurie, yeah, I mean, I think you got a copy of the email, but sure, what you got?
I apologize, I apologize to the background noise, our office is under construction. Did I hear two, two board members or two members from the same board? Is that what I heard, two?
It no longer apparently is my interpretation. I asked somebody to read it and tell me their interpretation of the law, I don't want to get into, you know. Apparently, two members. Now, if it's planned and you talk about school issues, that, as I interpret it, and I'm not saying you agree or disagree.
Well, so.
Could be a meeting that should be noted. And again, it ain't against the law, until the judge says so, I have no problem with that. I just wanted the school board members to be aware of this. They're going to make their own decisions.
But so you're.
I'm your chairman, I've got to make sure you're aware of stuff like this, so now you're aware of it.
I have one clarifying question. I have one clarifying question.
Sorry, I got to tell you, we really can't hear you here. Okay, all right, thank you, all right. Okay. Yeah, sure.
So from our April 19th, 2017 minutes, we did pass a motion that the board direct the superintendent to include with the 2016 annual report, an addendum which lists all the employees' names, alphabetical order, with their district positions, step level, years employed, annual salary, and district paid benefit contributions excluding HIPAA-related dental and health benefits for that year, and the grand total paid district benefits will also be shown. This list shall be included in annual reports for all subsequent years.
That's what I was talking about.
And the letter from January 22nd, 2016, from the attorneys states that, moreover, it is the school board that is charged with determining the contents of the annual report. So regardless, if we disregard the warrant, we already passed the motion.
That's what I'm saying.
And it should be in there now.
That's what I just said.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because you were reading two different letters there, and I want to make sure.
One, okay, once I finished with that, I went into the right to know.
And it is for subsequent years, and that's something that I wanted to make sure you understood. Okay, great, thank you so much. Nice.
What was the date of that meeting?
April 19th, 2017.
Okay. Policy JICD.
Do we have, are we going to have board comment?
If you want, I mean, this was really just for your information, run with it the way you want. I'm not going to be looking to see, did you go to coffee with someone and call them, let's plan a meeting?
It's not, not about that, about whatever we want to talk about.
Oh, do you want to do that now? Absolutely.
Okay. When I made my remarks about why I thought it was a bad idea to go to one meeting a month, I said that in addition to having, have to have time to prepare, and then in the meeting, have time to discuss and evaluate, we also need a very detailed agenda. And if you look at items 8.6, where it says, "School Board Calendar," if I was in the public and I saw that, I would have no clue that there was going to be a proposal for the school board to meet one meeting a month. That would be not even, not even enter my brain, okay? And also 8.8, annual report update and content. I would have no idea that we were going to talk about this warrant Article 7 or a right to know rule. I'm sure there's members of the public that would like to be here tonight if they knew these things were being discussed. I think that agendas in the future should have a little bit more detail.
More detail?
Yeah.
Little business, you have JICD.
Sure. So JIDC is Student Conduct, Discipline, and Due Process. This is the second read. This document is a revision of our current JICD, and it merges our current policy JK, which is outdated, into our current JICD. This document is the sample language that the New Hampshire School Board Association provides to school districts. Our language was not in compliance with the RSAs. It retains the intent of the policy, but it just helps to provide clear and compliant definitions for detention, suspension, and expulsion, reasons for taking those actions, the procedures to be followed, and the administrator's responsible for taking those steps. I'm sure you all read it through several times, but I'm sure you didn't have time to read it carefully, but I'm hopeful you glanced through this document. Our leadership has looked at it carefully and finds that it looks fine to them, and it is something that the School Board Association has recommended. I looked at both policies, they look similar, it's just a matter of cleaning up some of the language for legal purposes. I'm looking for a motion to approve this revised JICD and at the same time repeal JK. I'm going to approve policy JICD and repeal policy JK.
Second. Discussion?
I would like to share some information with the public, should I? This policy was outdated, is a nice way to put it, I guess. And it's important to note that it had rules in it that were pertinent to an old law that no longer affects us. And so when I did the legal research and talked to a lawyer about this, I found out that in the future, if a principal in our buildings suspends a student for 10 days, there's no appeal for that. It's gone. If you want to meet with me to appeal the principal or assistant principal's process for the suspension as a personnel matter, I can hear that. Subsequently, if we have an issue, and I am, because I receive all the discipline reports, right? So for example, with drugs and alcohol, I have the authority to suspend students for far more than 20 days at this point. There was a time when there was a Safe Schools Act that limited it to 20 days, that limit no longer exists. Just want the parents to know, and I've made it very clear to some students recently and some parents, and I'm saying this for the purpose of the public. I will not tolerate drugs, or vaping, or cigarettes in the schools that I run. And I want everyone to know that if your child does that, they will be referred to the police, and we will prosecute. We're not messing around anymore, because the number of students that have been put out on suspension for vaping, or drug abuse, or drug dealing, I'm not okay with it. That's all I'm going to say. So I'm saying this to be on record, that I'm saying the exact same message that I've said to students, this policy changes that, and it's going to be enforced strictly. And I'm only saying it because I care about these kids. I don't want to be mean or harsh, but I want people to know that drugs, alcohol, and smoking in our schools will not be tolerated.
Okay, so there's a motion? Further discussion? All in favor? Laurie? That's unanimous? Call you JK?
So JK is going to appeal with the same motion?
Yeah, they repealed it.
Same motion, okay. Pro files ready for the update.
Um, yeah, that was in. I'm trying to bring up my document, but. Here it is. I am very pleased to announce we have a framework that we've developed, and I can now retire from the board, my work is done here. This has been a truly community effort. We developed a overall framework for providing a roadmap to student success. For a long time, we've been arguing over what the student success mean. We've been fighting for a number of months about the SAT scores. Whenever we hear about our students, we look at the SAT scores. Well, we now have a roadmap providing some guidelines for student success, which allows flexibility, and different assessments can be completed to demonstrate a successful graduate. This is a one-page document, and I would really like to thank Superintendent and Mr. Trammell, Director of our Academics, Professional Learning, and Student Affairs, for his work on this document. As I said, it's truly been a community effort. We circulated a survey to get feedback from the public, and we tried to incorporate all of the suggestions into this one-page document. I don't know if you were able to print it out for tonight. Would you like me to read it through for you? It's pretty long, but it's pretty awesome, too. It says that a student is career in college ready when they will possess and demonstrate upon completion of a EK-12 education in our district, the following attributes and skills, and we have a list of things we hope that they'll demonstrate. Competencies in, including under Part II, work-study practices, collaboration, communication, creativity, and self-direction, math skills for everyday life through completion of at least three units of math courses and one math experience in the high school, the ability to write effectively as evidenced by performance on district writing competencies, demonstrated ability to use technology for continuous learning and to manage life responsibilities, appreciation of the fine arts through completion of at least one fine arts high school course or its equivalent, and exhibition of positive lifestyle choices that support and promote physical, mental, and social well-being. So that also captures physical education. And then we have a list of outcomes or indicators that can be completed to indicate success. And it does not include just the SAT scores. Any of the following two could be completed to demonstrate success and readiness to transfer or to begin a career. Completion of New Hampshire Scholars Program of Study, Standard Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math or Arts, a grade of pre- or proficient or better in a dual enrollment high school college course, an SAT score meeting or exceeding the college. um, an SAT score meeting or exceeding the college and career-ready benchmark, four eighty, um, in reading, writing, and five thirty in math. Uh, and these are, you can pick two of the, of these, and you can duplicate any one of them. American College Te- Testing, A C T scores, meeting or exceeding the college and career readiness benchmarks, and they're shown here, a score of three, four, or five on an advanced placement A P exam, earning a career or technical education and technical education industry-recognized credential, completion of a New Hampshire Career Pathway Program of Study, which includes academic coursework, post-secondary career planning, and a work-based internship, G L, G L O, uh, scoring at least a level three on components of the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery of tests that compromise the Armed, Armed Forces Qualifying Test, acceptance into a credentialed post-secondary institution, four-year or two-year college, career or technical school, or acceptance into an apprenticeship reviewed and validated by the Superintendent of Schools. Students will also complete an approved menu of community-based learning experiences that involve, that may involve personal interest learning, community service, or service learning projects, and civic engagement opportunities. And hopefully, um, as we develop it, students will complete a defensive learning or capstone exhibition, um, as they progress through the grades with a personalized project completed in grade twelve. This will help to develop their, uh, public speaking skills. And I am just so thrilled with this. I, um, we started out, when I began serving on the board, with a very vague and unclear definition of success. This was our, uh, five-year strategic plan's goal. It was pretty vague for students and for parents. It said, "The goal of our district is to become a top ten percent school district as measured by a ver- variety of indicators." Now, for the average student, there weren't, I'm sure we had those indicators and we were tracking them, but the parent or the student had no clue about what that entailed when it comes to success. So that was in twenty sixteen, and now we've got a very clear roadmap for students that they can look at, and it's nonjudgmental, there are many avenues to success depending on your interests and your goals leaving high school. And, um, so that's what we've got now. We're hoping to get this, this is the motion to approve tonight.
Yes, yes.
Um, it's just so exciting, because this is why I ran for the board. And our next steps hopefully will be that we'll look at our, our five-year strategic plan, which is a work in progress, and we're gonna look at the milestones which we're looking for, and we'll look at specific assessment outcomes that we're targeting in each grade level, and we wanna have specific expectations of improvement. And, uh, over two, three years, we need to talk about a timeframe for looking for those improvements. But this is the first step, and, um, we're looking for adequate yearly progress, I think that's what it's called.
Well, I, I think that it's important to note that the, uh, can I just add?
Yes, please.
Your very clear explanation, the, the, the Every Student Succeeds Act asked states to submit a plan that was more comprehensive in nature to meet the needs of students. Um, there's a national recognition that the idea that the SAT scores or one state assessment is not adequate in assessing the total functioning of our students at the federal level. So, the nice thing is, is that this aligns with our state's ESAA plan, which we just received documentation that they are, that has been approved, and they will be looking for evidence of the indicators that are listed in number three. What's important about this document is that we surveyed everybody we could who was willing to fill out the survey, looked at that information, and then met repeatedly with a number of people to discuss the possible outcomes. This document is the template for that, that, you know, we will now have to map out the specific goals. So what would a student need to do at the end of first grade in a reading level to be proficient? How many of our students are proficient? What do we have to do to move the rest? This document ties back into that plan that I shared with you or my entry plan work. It's kind of been happening in tandem, so it was really nice that we were able to present it on the same night. So I do support and feel very positive about the nature of this document, but I also feel really positive about the process that occurred. Oh, Michael would like to speak.
Uh, just a couple of quick comments, so, uh, Mr. Ambrose mentioned.
Microphone, sorry.
Sorry. Mr. Ambrose mentioned, uh, the ESAA plan, Every Student Succeeds Act, as being, uh, a plan that the New Hampshire Department of Education had to file with the U.S. Education Department. I wanna make a couple of notes about that. The plan that you see before you that Dr. Brown has just prevent, presented is far more rigorous than the plan that was submitted to the U.S. Department of Education by the New Hampshire Department of Education. Sandborn has gone above and beyond in terms of raising the bar and raising the standard on the expectations for students. So, for example, the comments about personalized learning, uh, or that could take the place, it could, could take the form of community service or service learning, or some career interest, uh, credential, for example. If I am a student, and, and let's just say that we come up with a requirement for a certain number of hours in community service or this, these personal, personal learning experiences, if I'm a student that wanted to explore boating safety because, you know, my family has a boat, and I wanna make sure that I can, uh, ride that boat safely out on Kingston Lake, which is obviously a benefit to our community if I'm a safe boater, if I go and take a ten-hour boater safety course, that would count toward my requirements in that sort of personal learning. That's not included anywhere in, um, the ESAA plan that was filed by the Department of Education. Dr. Brown mentioned this linked systems of student exhibitions that we might start in as low as grade one or two, and students would work their way up through our K through twelve system with these experiences that build upon each other, culminating in this capstone experience at the end of grade twelve. That is not part of the ESAA plan. That, that is a, a bar we are setting higher for our, our students than what is actually expected. Um, the other thing I would say is I'm really thrilled that this is being discussed and, and voted on this evening. I do feel, though, that this should be a living document, so that if the board approves this tonight, I, I feel very strongly that the very first thing that should happen is this document should be shopped around. We should be actively going out and meeting with community groups and business leaders, uh, church groups. We should be meeting with civic organizations, um, and we should be reviewing this with them and getting their feedback on this final, uh, product. This was the product of a lot of input in surveys and, uh, Mr. Ambrose's interviews with folks. But now that we do have a final product, I feel that we should validate it by going back out to those constituents from whom we got the information and saying, "Is this what you meant?" Uh, and if not, what else would you add, or what would you change? So while I encourage you to adopt this this evening, I also want to encourage you to think of this as a living document, because we may show this to industry leaders in the area, and they may say that we forgot something that was really important to them. Thank you.
Sir Chairman? I'd, I'd like to move that we adopt the career in college readiness document.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Um, I just have a couple, I think it's phenomenal, but I have some questions, uh, about certain parts of it. Do we have a definition of competency? Because competency appears throughout here.
Well, competency's definition is defined by the rubrics that we develop for assessment of that competency.
This is the work to be done?
It's a component, but, so for example, if a student turns in a piece of writing, we determine whether or not it's competent based on a preset rubric about the components that we feel would be critical for that piece of writing to be competent. So, the term competency really is defined as the ability to demonstrate the skill or attribute without effort would be a meat, but there are levels that are above that, which would be above competent. So that's a level four. And Michael, if you'd like to talk about com- the definition of competency, I'm certainly, I don't mean to, Michael has done a lot of work on this with the committee, so I don't wanna step on his toes.
So, uh, locally, we've done a lot of work around defining competency and designing rubrics, as Mr. Ambrose mentioned. In fact, a lot of our work has been recognized on a national level, because we have been out a little bit ahead of the curve in terms of what we're doing here with competency-based education. As Mr. Ambrose mentioned, these, the, the concept of competency suggests that you should take these skills and be able to demonstrate them in an interdisciplinary fashion. So if I learn something in writing, for example, as Mr. Ambrose said, I should be able to take that skill and apply it in multiple areas across my life. Now, locally, we have defined competency with four different layers or components, so that if a student was to exhibit the highest level of competency, they would have to have all four of those attributes. You know, so for example, independence is one of our key attributes. If a student cannot perform a key function or skill with independence, they're not competent. They need ongoing support, because part of competency in our definition locally for proficiency is that level of independence. They have to be able to attack that problem with a depth of knowledge. So just understanding the right answer isn't good enough. They have to be able to apply that into, um, the work that they're doing. So if I'm building a trellis support for my home, I need to be able to think back, "Well, I know some information about triangles that will help me to build this trellis system for my house." That's an application of a skill, uh, a fact that I know. We have to be able to do this, um, in a novel setting. So if I can do something in a classroom, it doesn't help me if I can't then apply it in a workplace, right? So the novel setting is critical. And the last component is that the skill has to be replicable. In other words, I have to have complete faith that the student can not only do it today, but if I gave some sort of assessment, do I have full faith a week from now, a month from now, six months from now, that that student will be able to perform at that level? So, in an old system where a student studies, prams the night before an exam, gets the correct answer, and then forgets it the next week, that's not competency, right? So, those four attributes are built into our local definition of competency, which actually has been used on a national level. Makes sense?
Yep, thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, so, having heard that, number two, where it says graduates will demonstrate evidence towards competency, I would suggest that we consider changing that to will demonstrate evidence of competency. I mean, I could see the ninth and tenth graders working towards it, but later on, you should demonstrate that you can do it.
Michael, would you like, are you comfortable with that, Jim? I'm gonna ask him for your input, because you're the director of this work.
And I don't think that, uh, Jim, I don't think that word was chosen with any particular intent. I think it was probably just that.
Honestly, Jim, I think it's a great catch.
And then?
Well, I, I, you have, you have another?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we need to go on this one and then go to the next one. You can't, you can't have two motions.
I'm not on a motion, I'm, I'm on, well, we can't approve, I'm asking questions about this.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say, can we change it? Okay.
No, no. Um, number two, where it says, number two B? It's, it says one math experience, or three math courses and one math experience. What is a math experience?
So, a math, a math experience, and this actually comes from the New Hampshire regulations. A math experience is a course that has mathematical practices embedded within them. So, for example, if I take a business course called Personal Finance that has accounting practices in it, that draws a lot from mathematical experience. So, so we have a whole series of courses at the high school that are labeled, we have to classify these according to the New Hampshire regulations if they meet, um, this thing called the, the, the standard for being a math experience. So if you were in, um, a health sciences course, and there was a lot of measurement in that health sciences course at S S T, for example, that may qualify as being a mathematical experience, because the science and math included in it is so great that it, it counts toward being a mathematical experience.
So are there any math courses that don't have a math experience?
No, no, uh, yes.
Can I clarify from a layman's, because with all due respect for you, it's like, it rolls off, so, the easiest way to look at this, just as a normal person, is on the high, on the high school website, on the high school website, on the left side, there's a program of studies, and it breaks down every single course, the description, and what it counts as. So like, all the courses that can count as math experiences on there are listed math experience with a description of the course. So I think that would be the easiest way. It's two separate things, it's not, it's not a math class, it's a class that has math in it. So you have to take three pure maths and one math experience. So I might take geometry, Algebra II, and pre-calculus, and then say, "Pre-calculus is not my bag. I'm not gonna go on to calculus next year." Instead, I'm gonna take business, whatever, if it counts as a math experience, I'm gonna look in the catalog. But it's all laid out on the high school website under the, uh, program of studies.
So you can have a math experience without having a math course?
Right, because as long as you've taken three pure math classes, which is not really any different from when I was in high school a thousand years ago. Not as long as it was for him!
Okay. Jim, anything else?
No, that's it.
Jim, can I ask a question? Are, are you asking to amend the motion so that we put the word "of" instead of "towards"?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Make that motion to amend it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd make the motion that, um, item two is changed, uh, the word "towards" is changed to "of."
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to indicate to, to Jim that we're not jettisoning, jettisoning the traditional statewide assessments. That's included in this document. It's just fleshing out for parents and students what is necessary to become a successful graduate and allowing some flexibility to the students, which is important, so.
And I would say this is exactly the kind of clear, simple, well-thought-out, laid-out, understandable document that we should strive for with everything.
All in favor? Corey, you there?
I, I am also, I am.
Is it unanimous on the amendment, or was it?
Unanimous on the amendment.
Right, so now, okay, I just wanted to make sure, right?
Now, we have, I believe.
I'll make a motion to move, we approve, uh.
There we go.
Second?
As, as amended.
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, this has been a great process, I've really enjoyed it.
We did the Costa Rica food trip.
Hey, we got applause, that was pretty cool.
Okay? I'll take a motion to table item two, eight-two, Food Service Corrective Action. Michelle doesn't wanna cover it tonight.
You haven't said anything on that, I might as well bring you into the loop.
So moved.
I've got you down as the one to be presenting, all right? Moved, second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion, all in favor? Okay, we also have tuition rates from Fremont. That, if you recall, if you were at the Fremont meeting, you and the superintendent got together on that, came up with that. We'd like to table that until the next meeting.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Authorization to hire. With the summer coming on, we've all already had some discussion about no meeting in July. It's possible, although we do not know as of when I talk to you Thursday, uh, an administrator could leave. All right? So we need an authorization to hire for... Uh, uh, actually, yeah, anyway, because we won't be here, all right? We won't be. So the superintendent's asking you, I'm gonna have you explain it.
Mister Chairman, point of order?
Yep, yep.
All right, I'm not sure if that's, but, having, um, voted earlier that we are not going to not have two meetings a month, are we saying that we are going to have another meeting this month? We typically would have another meeting in June.
But historically, we've never had a meeting in July.
Right, but the authorization to hire is typically done at the last meeting before we sort of adjourned for the summer.
But all of a sudden, he gets a notice that i- in, in Au- August second, third, fourth, that I'm do- I'm gone, I'm out of here.
Oh, we would move it to the next agenda, so.
I think we should move it to the next agenda.
Okay, all right, okay.
I, I make a motion to move it to the next agenda for the next meeting in June.
Okay, we'll table that one off.
We have to have a vote.
Okay?
Oh, we didn't vote on that?
Yes, no, I'm sorry, I'm writing it down here. Motion was made, seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, school board mapping outcome. That was you, you wanted that table. Hey, need a, need a motion to table that?
Uh, move, second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right?
Aye.
We did the calendar, now we're back to you, Pam. G C E B.
Let's just table.
Well, we, don't we need a first read? Don't we need a first read? Don't we need a first read and a second read to be then?
She's kidding, I think.
Oh, okay, she was, if you want, I mean, it's, it's, I didn't think we could, really.
She was joking.
Okay.
Okay, so... Can you hand these over?
I'm assuming we all read this at home, and the document was presented to us?
So our administrative staff recruiting policy is being presented to the board for a review. Last spring of 2017, there was confusion, which arose when an administrative interviewing committee was organized for candidates for a high school assistant principal position. That committee included four high school students, but no board members. Since that time, a narrative has emerged, I think, that we lack consistent policies regarding the procedure for administrative hiring. The fact is, the existing rules were not followed, but rather than simply follow them, there was a sense that our administrative hiring policies required revision. The personnel committee drafted some recommendations, and they were forwarded to our policy committee. In fact, we do have intact and clear administrative hiring policies, with the exception of a section concerning viewing of application files by all board members, which is not allowed now, and it only applies to those on a hiring committee. The policies we have are usable and fine as is. We have several policies that give authority to the school board oversight on administrative hires. The policy we're looking at tonight, it better defines that process, but we're also giving up our general oversight and flexibility when it comes to a process. We're actually locking in a process. There are pluses and minuses to doing that. I'm almost done with my review. Policy BD dash E, the board committee missions and statements of purpose indicate personnel will review personnel needs and recommend to the chair of the board the process to be used and the people to be involved and selecting administrators. Policy BBA, school board powers and duties states that we shall adopt policies necessary to control and effectuate recruitment of teachers and other employees, and may delegate authority to the superintendent of schools to carry out the provision of the policies. Policy CED, administrative personnel states candidates for administrative positions will file a formal written application, and candidates selected by it, meaning the board, for interview will be included in the interview process. Policy GCEB indicates, again, candidates for a position of administrator will file a formal application with the superintendent, and a number shall be selected for interview by the superintendent and the school board or its designated committee. You get the idea. There's a lot of oversight we enjoy currently as a board on administrative hiring procedures and composition of the hiring and search committee. We can stick with our current practices, or we can move to something that's more specific, and that's what this draft presents tonight. Now, that is my interpretation of events. I'm sure there are other people that have a different interpretation of what happened. I have already stated that my level of disinterest in changing our policies could not be greater, but I understand the need to have a procedure in place if the board's away in the summer, and we don't have time to organize personnel meetings, and then board meetings, and approve a process, and talk to the board chair about recommended process, then we may want to have a procedure locked in. And a lot of this new, this new policy, it looks pretty good to me, although, again, we are making, we are losing that flexibility and over-process. I don't know if you had a chance to read through this new policy for tonight. This is the first read.
I was listed as first and second, because if we have an opening, we need to get one.
But we are meeting again in June.
That's fine, we can change that. We should take a motion to change that. I'm simply sharing what was listed, not my opinion.
So that includes my summary. I have some comments about this policy, but I just wanted to outline how we got here.
I only have one thing I want to bring up that's really not a big concern, but you've got even numbers in both cases. You want, you've got eight and one, or ten, depending on whether you have three and two.
No, it's not, it's seven and nine.
Maybe it's not at all.
Two board members, two teachers, one support staff.
Well, plus the superintendent. In addition to the superintendent, there's one.
Oh, correct, you need to...
Okay, then you've got, okay, so am I correct, it's eight and ten?
You are correct.
Okay, so this is something we can discuss at the next meeting, but something you want to be aware of, we have even number. Nothing wrong with that necessarily, but if you get a five-five tie, motion doesn't carry, and you get into parliamentary stuff, and whatever. So I just want you to think about it between now and the next time we do the final read and vote on it.
See, can I just say a couple of quick things? Pam, is that okay?
Yes, please.
I just need to know what to do if we have an opening in the summer. Really, it's that simple. I can't be calling people and spending two or three days debating with everyone about this process. I do not agree with Dr. Brown that you're giving up your power, because this policy clearly states that we would bring forward two candidates to the board for consideration, which we have discussed at length. The board wants me to bring forward two, I'll do that. The typical practice is one, right? So I, we've agreed on that at the committee level, that we could live with two. And in all fairness, it is when the other policies outline that the board is supposed to set up a process for me to follow, that's what this policy does, it sets up a process to follow. I really just want to know what y'all want me to do, right? Because then I can do it and get it done if we're in a hurry. The problem is that if we get an opening in mid-August or early August, and I need to move and hire a candidate for a position, I need to have this process clear so that I can go. Because frankly, there are a lot of times that folks that are in assistant-level roles move late July, early August, because they don't have veteran experience as an administrator to get a position, and then a student is principal, and bam, they get a job. So in fact, I think we had that happen last year. We had to hire mid-July, late July, because one of our assistant principals resigned. The questions that the committee has for you as a board are outlined in red. Under number one, we need to know if you want us to have two or three board members on the committee. Excuse me. And then two teachers or three teachers? So we, it's important to recognize that the committee had a lot of difficult conversation, which is why we brought this to you, because we really kind of couldn't come to consensus that about this issue. One concern is that if there's too many board members on a hiring committee, it gets lopsided. The bigger the committee, the harder it is to move the committee. And the other thing is just literally practicality. Who's around, right? If it's, if it's a week in July, and three or four of you are on vacation, it can get tricky. So I just want to be really clear that I need you to be careful not to restrict this to the point where we can't get it done. That's all I'm asking for. And then the other piece on this policy was the piece about, we did come to consensus that moving two to the board would be adequate, but the number of board members on the committee and teachers on the committee was the sticking point for argument. Everything else is open to discussion, not you, of course.
I think we can satisfy the need to be able to hire people in the summer by, this is a traditional thing the board always does, is giving you a summer, summer hiring authorization. It doesn't require the boards...
Well, I'm not comfortable with that. Let me tell you why. And I appreciate you trusting me with that flexibility. It really is, I interpret that as a nod of confidence, and I appreciate that. I want a clear process for transparency, which I did not talk about in my entry plan. But if I could summarize my entry plan in one word, it's transparency. Transparency has been the number one concern from everyone I've talked to in terms of the tension that existed when I was hired, okay? So if this process isn't outlined clearly, it's not transparent. So what I don't want to do is open myself up to being accused of not doing a fair process. I really would like this laid out clearly for administrative hiring.
Well, then let me amend my comment. I think in the past, there were two board members on the search and interview committees. The personnel chair was the main person from the board that did that. I think the idea of rotating members is a good one, rather than have the same person do it all the time. I think two school board members on the search and the interview committee, I think that would be sufficient, in my opinion. But I also think that if there's another board member that's interested, then that person should be involved too. I don't think you can have four, because that's a quorum. But if there's interest amongst members, it's not a requirement, but if there's interest, I don't think that a board member who wants to be involved should be prohibited from being involved. And then, I think as far as the two candidates to be interviewed by the school board, I think the superintendent should make his recommendation, and then the board interview the two candidates. And I would, I would think that the board would go with the superintendent's recommendation, but unless there was some extraordinary reason not to.
Or one backs out.
Yeah.
That rule was designed to protect us. We have two people go forward, and one quits at the last minute, we still have a, that happens.
Right.
You know, so there's a lot of brakes and gas here, Jim, that are happening. And I will say that the committee, we neglected to point out that we did discuss changing the policy that puts the personnel chair on the hiring committee to make it more of a rotated position. And we also talked about amending that policy in the future to say that you can't be on a committee, what we want to do is stop having committees be all the same people.
Yeah.
So we want to look at that policy next, and look at a way to rotate, so that you also couldn't be on it two in a row. And again, it's that idea of fairness, transparency, you know, giving everyone an equal opportunity to participate was really highly discussed at length.
But I don't think the board should be asked to give up their presence.
No.
Well, I don't think that's asked.
We're not asking for that.
Right.
We're trying to decide what, what I'm asking is, do you want to have two board members and two teachers, or three board members and three teachers?
Okay, well, you asking my opinion?
I guess I'm asking the board's guidance.
Something that we would discuss at the next meeting, because this is the first read, isn't it?
This is the first read.
But we need to get this now, but this has been, I'll wait till, when you're done, I'll speak, so.
Well, but we have to discuss it at the next meeting, understand? Because we need, we need a second reading. I don't want to, I don't want to have things, oh, looks like we've got it done, and then all of a sudden, next meeting, somebody changes their mind and...
Well, I think the idea of a minimum of two board members is a good one. I think that also, if a third member's interested, they should have the option to participate.
Well, first of all, point of order, just to mention that we have to have a motion to not, there's, our policy for bringing policies to the board has an option for unusual circumstances to do first and second read on the same night. I just, we just need a motion to do first read tonight and change the agenda right now. Does that make sense? And then we can, then we can discuss this further at the next meeting. I just wanted to follow the proper procedure.
Make a motion to do first read tonight?
Second.
All in favor? Corey?
Can I ask for clarification? Did I have two?
No, no, we're looking, we're looking for your vote on, on the motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, hold on, I think Jim was still talking.
No, I'm done.
Okay. Karen, you were going to say...
You can go next, that's fine.
Okay, all right, Corey, you're up.
Did I, can I get clarification on two members only in personnel committee from the personnel committee? Any clarification on that?
It's part of the personnel committee policy.
Yep.
Say that one more time?
It's part of the personnel policy.
Okay. I'm of the belief that we should put constraints and not necess, or limitations in that give you the autonomy to do your job. I don't want to be voting on another principal again. I, it's not my job. We are in charge of you, and if you are in charge of making sure that things are progressing in our district, we give you that autonomy, and we evaluate you on that. I'm not interested in voting on a principal, again, or assistant principal. You know the job, you have that expertise. I feel like I sound like Jan Bennett, but the point being is that's beyond our jurisdiction. So a subcommittee should be able to come forth and you say, this is who we've nominated, and here's why. And if it's within the limitations and constraints, then we're, our voice is null and void. You guys are the voting party. You guys voted during that process.
I think this is a discussion that I would probably be for the second read.
Well, okay.
No, that's okay, we've had a lot of discussion tonight that probably should have been second read. I, I'm just saying that, you know, there are a couple of things I was thinking of too. I kind of like his idea, but I'd like to adapt it as far as have somebody else all of a sudden say, I want to be on the committee.
I can't hop on.
I'm not comfortable I am with that, but I think they should be able to be there, but we'll discuss that later.
I, I don't want to just say I want to hop on because I have vested interest on this position. That's not, that's not our role. Are you, he has a subcommittee that takes care of that. And that subcommittee takes care, and we have two board members, leave it at two board members, that's probably two more than necessary, because the community is the one who should be speaking, and as long as it's in line with the superintendent's objectives, that's his, it's his jurisdiction, it's not ours. We evaluate him, if he made a bad hire, sorry, Tom, you're gone.
Well, thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
You know what I mean?
I want to speak.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I, because you said you didn't have anything, and I...
No, I didn't say I didn't have anything. I have plenty. I said that Corey could go first.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Karen.
So, so a little bit of history, first of all. I, I will be very honest, I'm very unhappy this is getting pushed out again for a second read. I was on the policy committee. I was one of the people who pushed to rewrite this policy, so that there were clear guidelines for hiring, because I was not happy with how things went down last summer. And I was shocked, as a board member, to see how loosey-goosey the hiring practices were. And thankfully, we ended up with good people, but, so I was one of the people who wanted this policy nailed down and very specific back in September, when I was on the policy committee. And we discussed it, and I was charged with merging policies and writing up one, and then it went back to the policy committee in October, and we discussed it some more, and we tabled it for discussion in November, and then it got pushed out, and it got pushed out, and it got pushed out, and then the last thing was in January, policy committee decided that we weren't going to do anything with this until we got the recommendations from the NHSBA, and to see how it lined up with that. So now it is October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May, June. It has now been nine months without, I mean, progress has been made, because we have this, something to look at tonight, but we're in a situation now, it's been nine months, and we still have the same loosey-goosey policy that everybody, I think, was pretty annoyed with last summer, which is why I took a first stab at doing a better one in October. So thoughts about this? I think this really looks fine. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't move to do a first and second read tonight, get this nailed down, so that there are clear procedures in place, and Tom can do his job. This gives more, to me, this has a little more teeth than the previous one did, per the personnel committee, which I am the chair of the personnel committee. In the old policy, I'd be a member of all administrative search committees. It was actually my idea that it shouldn't be limited to the personnel committee. I am the one who said, let's have two board members on every administrative committee, and it should be rotating. It shouldn't be the same person. That was my idea to come up with. I think that is a lot more egalitarian than saying, just because you're on the personnel committee, you are always going to be on a search committee. And I am the chair of the personnel committee. I want other people to be involved. I do not think it should be more than two board members, and I don't think it should be more than two teachers. I think we have to be very careful that there is always a fair, equitable, and efficient balance for getting things done in the schools. I think it is very important, there are two board members on the committee. I think it's important to have two different perspectives on the situation. I think it's important to have two teachers. In our previous policy, you could hire an administrator and not have any teachers in the hiring process, the people who are working for the administrator and who know more about the building than most of the administrators. So this policy is a huge leap forward, as far as I am concerned, in making our practices more professional, more accountable, and more transparent, which is the buzzword that everyone is all excited about. And I happen to agree. I think every single person who applies in this district should expect to be treated the same way. And I think every person who has a stake in who we hire, which is the board, because we're the ones who are going to end up in hot water if something goes wrong, the administrators, the teachers, a parent, there should always be a parent on the committee. There should be support staff on the committee. This spells out, so that there is representation from different people on the committee. So it can't be like, oh, I couldn't reach any board member, so whatever, it's been Pete thirty-seven times in a row on the hiring committee. That's, that is, this policy avoids that. And I think it is gilding the lilies... And I think it is, um, gilding the lily to say, well, we need three of this and we need three of that. Keep it simple, seven, it's an odd number and then we get whatever, you, because you're the final person who the, they go to for the second interview. Um, but two board members on a rotating basis. I may have no interest. I, I may be on the personnel committee, I may be like, you know what? If somebody is passionate about doing it, Jim is like, man, I really want to, you know, interview this curriculum, you know, wonderful, have at it, enjoy, you know? And then the next time it's somebody else. But I am really annoyed that we are here nine months later, so like, well, let's do a second read of another thing. No.
The policy says we have to have second.
We could do it both tonight and get it done. They, the policy committee has been working on this since September. I, I would like to see this gone, I would like to see this include two board members, two teachers, one support staff member, one administrator and one parent. Everything else I can live with. So I am mov-
You're going to make, make that a motion, right?
I am moving that we accept this policy saying two and two.
Two school board members?
Yep.
Yep.
Two teachers, one support staff member, one administrator and one parent. And although it's not in the policy, I would say, as long as I am in personnel, I would not have it be necessarily two personnel people.
And the superintendent.
So, second.
The superintendent.
Because I'm trying, I'm trying to get to seven is what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
The superintendent doesn't usually vote unless there's a tie on the committee.
Well, the superintendent should, well, I'm just going by what is...
Right, when I, when I, when I run a hiring committee, I don't, I'm facilitated.
You'd be the vote breaker.
Right, well, I'm also the person who does the second interview. So I have to be careful.
But if push comes to shove, you can be the vote breaker. While the superintendent would be...
You know, and the other thing that the board always needs to keep in mind...
Wait, wait, I'll second that, Karen. You made a motion.
We've got a second.
Okay.
Okay, now discussion.
Well, the other thing that the board also needs to keep in mind is when, if things, God forbid, go south at one of the schools and something ends up being escalated to the board, we don't want to have a huge amount of multitude of, we want to limit how many board members may have developed some type of a closer connection or investment in an administrator. And I think that's another important reason to have rotating board members doing the interviews. Because I may have, you know, human nature is you look more favorably on somebody that you have an investment in. If I know that I have been on the committee and I have picked, you know, these four people or whatever, if something ever happens and that person comes to the board, you know, your, your, your judgment can be clouded. And I think that's another reason to have two board members and have them rotating so that there's just, again, fair, equitable and efficient, should, to me, should be the goal of everything related to school procedure.
So, further discussion.
So we're now going to vote on whether to approve this as it's written?
Um, we need to vote on the motion.
Then we're going to have a motion for the second read. This is the first read.
I'm confused. What was your motion, Karen? My motion is to accept this as is with the two and two, not the red three. Are you with me so far?
First and second read?
No, this is only the first read.
For first read. Second read would have to be a second motion.
A second. We'll do that after we do this one.
You can't, I think we motioned to accept first reads though.
That's what we, that's what we discussed, no, she made a motion.
But I didn't think we ever did that. I didn't think that was...
We did it.
She, she made a motion to accept it with two school board members, two teachers, one support staff, one parent and the superintendent.
I'm clear now, okay.
Amy, I got confused for a second too. I just...
Um, accepting this as a first read goes beyond what we've been discussing, Ron. We're, you know, we're, we're...
I'm going by what her motion is.
Yeah, we're basically talking about number three, defining what the, what the, uh, the search committee is or the interview committee is.
No, I'm looking at GCEB Administrative Staff Recruiting Procedure.
Right.
Which is up for first read.
To accept that as written with this, with this...
Without the red.
You're accepting this with this amendment to it. Which is two, two, one, one, one. Two school board, two teachers, one support staff, one parent, one superintendent.
Yes, yes.
Um, there's, I have another, I, I think we've already talked, if you look at...
Well, wait a minute, we need to say with her motion.
Well, this is part of it.
Okay, no, you're addressing her motion, fine.
Yeah, but we're, we're, I mean, that accept this whole, accepts this whole document for first read. So, number eight, we've already talked about a difference in what number eight stands.
Where is number eight? Look at what's getting out here, right here.
I've got it right here.
Where's number eight?
Second page.
No, you're looking at draft. This is final draft. Put that away. That's from the other day.
Well, that's the one that was emailed to us. Right. Okay, so there is no number eight emailed?
No, this is the one on the table for tonight.
Thank you.
Which in, which in itself is an issue, but that's a different conversation.
We're getting there.
I do, but I'm picking on people.
So we have a motion. Any further discussion?
So is the motion to approve this as the first read?
As the first read with...
To strike forward.
Those changes.
Right, but it's the first reads, we're not approving this document tonight, we're still in the first read, correct?
Yes.
Right, and then I'm going to make a motion for a second.
Well, we'll do that, let's get, let's get this one first, all right? So we've got amendment to the first read of, I'm going to say, again, two school board members, two teachers, one support staff, one parent and the superintendent. Right? So that's your motion for the first, amendment to the first read?
Yes.
Okay, so all in... No, okay.
Before we vote, um, the reason I want up to three board members, minimum two and up to three, is that without being a member of the hiring committee, a board member cannot view the applicant's files. So I'd like it to be up to three for that reason. That is my main concern there.
But why?
Why? Because that, that's a review for, right?
Okay, because we can do that.
I just, I, I agree with Dr. Brown. I, you know, minimum two, but I think if there's, and, and Jim as well, if a third board member wants to be involved and feels like if they're, you know, that's part of the job that they are doing to serve their constituents, then I, I also think it should be three.
Yeah, I, I want to read something that the, from the...
Well, we, we, we need to move, not move the motion, but we need to stay to the motion.
Yeah, and I am.
All right, go ahead.
This, this is from the New Hampshire School Boards Association about school board responsibilities. Okay? Set and establish school board policy. As noted above, school boards are required to abide by and implement numerous statutes, rules and regulations. Many state statutes and NHDOE regulations require school boards to adopt policies. NHSBA advocates, advocates that the development of clear and sound legal policies is critical to the sexual operation of any school district and the adopting policy is among the most fundamental responsibilities of any board of education. Policy is the tool that provides the board power to allow or require action. It is through policy that lay citizens can govern effectively the board policy. The board is a policymaking body and the policies that it enacts are the local law of the school district. Policies are broad guidelines, philosophical, philosophical statements set by the school board to chart the district's course of action. And then it says, while the, it's like, it goes on to talk about the responsibility to the taxpayers. It says, "One of the most vital aspects of school board roles and responsibilities is the development of a budget that serves the needs of the students while simultaneously respecting the ability of taxpayers to fund it in some system." I think having board participation on hiring administrators falls within that definition completely.
Please call me.
That administrators are, that the executives that the superintendent counts on to implement all our policies. And if we don't have a say in that...
Why are you saying not a say? It's two board members.
Yeah, but if three, if three board members want to be involved...
So then you're going to have three board members and two teachers?
Sure, because that's our responsibility according to the NHSBA.
Hold on, I want to, I want to just put the brakes on for one second.
Okay.
I want to help.
Okay.
Your job is to set the policy.
Yep.
She made a motion for two. You guys should vote on that. If it bails or passes, you can make another motion.
Then you're up.
All right.
Because you're really making a motion to do three. You know what I'm saying?
I'm trying to help go.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
I don't care if it's two or three. I just need to know what to do.
That's what I was trying to get at. I didn't know where you were going.
I'm saying, I'm not making a motion to that. I'm saying the reason why I don't, I don't agree with this, this motion.
Thank you, but I just wanted you to hear that.
Yeah, thank you.
And I understand that it is your role and responsibility to, to set the policy.
So, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to move the motion? Am I correct, you want to move the motion? All right. All in favor of two school board members, two teachers, one, one support staff member, one parent and one superintendent, and the superintendent say aye?
Aye.
One, two, three, four. Opposed? One, two, three, so there'd be no abstain because that's seven. All right, motion passes. Okay, now, second read.
I, I move to do the second read tonight because this has been languishing for nine months.
Can I ask you to short, well, can I, can I have a second on that?
Second.
Could we just shorten it to say as read on the first reading?
As read on the first read.
So we don't have to read it all over again?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
I have one comment.
Yes.
Um, I'm looking at GCEB Administrative Staff Recruiting as supplied by the New Hampshire School Board Association, as you were just reading, Jim. And there are four lines in their policy. Staff recruitment is a responsibility of the superintendent. Principals and other staff will be, will assist the superintendent as needed.
Okay.
First consideration will be given to those applicants seeking permanent rather than temporary employment. All teachers must be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the school board. The superintendent shall ensure a thorough check is made of the candidate's prior record, prior to nomination on the board. It gives the power to the superintendent because that's who we're in charge of.
All right, thank you.
We're, we're micromanaging.
All right, thank you. Okay, all, oops, more discussion?
The RSA's indicate the superintendent is responsible for nominating candidates, which we then vote on. The process itself can be set by the board. So everything else is up to us, one. And two, we're talking about leadership teams that advise the superintendent in developing policies and implementing policies. I think it's one of our most vital roles is to have a say and wish leadership members join his team. Um, I personally would like to be involved in that step. I understand there are many employees that he nominates, but this is a particularly important set of employees and the board should have some, um, oversight, some detailed oversight. I mean, if we just want to hire a superintendent and go home and have one meeting a month, that's fine, but I don't agree with that.
I move the motion that we accept the second read.
All in favor of the motion as read? By saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's four to three, so there cannot be any abstentions. All right, moving on, I believe we are at the next meeting. I have five things for the agenda. Now, turns out the superintendent will be in Columbia, not the country, Columbia University, on the twentieth. So how about a motion to meet on the twenty-seventh, which would be the next Wednesday? Unless you want to meet next week, but I think that's...
Oh, no, we can't next week, you got...
Yes, that's...
It's graduation.
Graduation.
Right, okay. So how about the twenty-seventh, assuming we'd like the superintendent to be here because he will be at Columbia University on the twentieth?